Good evening, nobody, and welcome to your Lompoc City Council meeting. Hopefully, some of you are out there at home watching us, because otherwise, we're gonna get away with something, I don't know, something, we're gonna do something funny. We'll all get up and dance and sing. Who wants to dance? No volunteers? Okey-dokey. Roll call, please.
Council Agency Member Martner. Council Agency Member Costa.
Present.
Council Agency Member Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Protan Vice Chair Lingal.
Here.
Mayor Chair John Lin.
Here. Okay. Since there's no one here, I guess we can't have any oral communications unless the ghost wants to come forward. Don't see him here this evening. We will be going to a closed session in the utility conference room to cover three items: A conference with real property negotiators for property at 112 North H Street, 203 North N Street, 709 to 713 North E Street, 501 to 513 North S Street, 508 North T Street, and 504 North T Street. Lompoc, California, city negotiators, Laurel Barcelona City Administrator and Joseph Panoni, city attorney, negotiating party Steve Taber under negotiating price and terms for Lompoc Community Development Corporation. And a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation subdivision A of Section 54956.9, Pacific Western Bank, et cetera, versus Lompoc Housing Community Development Corporation Case 1389106, and Citibank NA, et cetera, versus Lompoc Housing Community Development Corporation Case 1389696. And a conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation initiation of litigation pursuant to subdivision C, Section 54956.9. One matter regarding LHCDC. And we'll see you at 7:00. Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting. We had a closed session earlier, dealing with a number of items. Because two of the items dealt with a piece of property that was in 500 feet of property that Councilmember Starbuck and I are involved in, we were excluded from that portion of it. Therefore, our city attorney will be making a report on the entire closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. There basically was nothing to report out because there are no actions that were taken by the council, but the council did want to make sure that the public understood that the council has received no formal notice from LHCDC that LHCDC has started their dissolution process, and there is an obligation for LHCDC, if they want it dissolved, to give a particular notice to the city, and they haven't received it yet.
Okay, and now, if you'd rise, please, and Ron Wiley, come on down. Maybe not. God, we come to you this evening with difficult decisions to be made for our community. We come to you as a group, all of us together, seeking the very best for our community. We ask your guidance and your gentle hand upon our shoulders when we become a little too excited to bring the very best that we can deliver, both as council members and as participants this evening, for our community. Thank you. Amen. If you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll have a presentation from Susan Williams from the Lompoc Unified School District Adult Education regarding our vocational nursing program, quite a success, and I know a number of council members have been to graduations and seen the light in their eyes as they graduate.
Thank you very much. You were at graduation, and we appreciate it immensely, as did the young ladies who graduated that evening. I am Susan Williams. I'm principal of Lompoc Unified Adult Education, and we have a fantastic vocational nursing program. We're pleased that you've given us the opportunity on your agenda this evening to share a little bit more about it with you. Unfortunately, our website is not where we thought it was going to be. Your lovely IT person and I worked on it this afternoon, but we're going to bring you a bit of a PowerPoint to share some pictures with you and some information. I'm going to try my very best to be bright, be brief, and be gone. I know you have a heavy agenda tonight, and I don't want to take up too much of your time. Our vocational nursing program began in 2006. The first class was actually in January of that year. About two years prior to that, we did a lot of work on curriculum, staffing, getting approval from the state board to offer the program. We get questions about why we did that from the community, and our response is that we looked at the newspaper articles about the need for nurses in our community. We looked at the need for persons to have training and opportunities to build their skills and to move into a better-paying job. So we decided to pursue nursing as an option for our community and looked at who was going to be coming to the program, looked at the demographics of who might attend a vocational nursing program with us. And we realized that not many people can afford to quit their jobs, to go back to school full-time, to upgrade their skills, and so we looked and implemented a very non-traditional schedule. You'll find our nursing candidates attending evenings, two days a week, and Saturday morning because they work. I would say, with the exception of one person, over the last five years, every one of them holds either a part-time job or a full-time job and goes to school full-time. It's a busy, busy schedule for them. You'll find our ladies, right now it's all ladies, involved in classroom setting for theory. They're also involved in clinicals every week, and so they do nine hours of theory and 16 hours of clinical every week. These are two of our most recent graduates. They're in our classroom for theory and our skills lab onsite for their clinicals initially to get experience and skills developed. And then you'll see them at our hospital and at our comprehensive care center, at the county clinic, and the tribal clinic in San Ynez, doing their clinicals to meet the state requirements. The program enrolls students that, since its inception, the students have ranged in age from 18 to 47. We have students who are recent high school graduates coming to the program, who have fulfilled the prerequisites, and we have persons with bachelor's degrees and beyond, looking at career changes, being laid off, looking at different career fields to provide for their family. Our program is accredited by the California State Board of Vocational Nursing and Psychiatric Technicians, and we're working actually toward national accreditation. We're knee-deep in paper right now with an organization titled Council on Occupational Education out of Atlanta, Georgia, to receive national accreditation. We have an hourly VN vocational nursing director. We have a half-time clinical instructor who works at the hospitals and the comprehensive care center with our candidates. We have an open position that we're having trouble filling, about a third-time theory position. Nurses are difficult to come by, as you know. And our instructors in the program, when they substitute, are in the neighborhood of $45 to $50 an hour. So it's clearly a living wage opportunity for them to come and teach in our program. The teachers are credentialed. They're also approved by the Board of Vocational Nursing. The board and the credentialing commission at the state put them through a lot of hoops to get them certified to teach in the program. We get asked about how our students -- take your remote. Thank you. -- get into the program. This is the first initial criteria. They must be 17, that's a state mandate. They must have a high school diploma or a GED. They must be a current nursing assistant, medical assistant, or EMT, and they must complete the application process on time. We kid with them a bit and say their first quiz is whether they turn the application in on time, complete, or not. It's critical that they be meticulous in the process. They go through an application and a letter of intent. We ask for three professional recommendations. We didn't add the word "professional" until after the first class. We got a recommendation on one of our candidates in the very first class from her veterinarian, saying she took really good care of Fluffy. I said, "Well, it wasn't exactly what we meant. We were looking for your work experience in terms of working with patients." They come in and they take the HESI exam, and the HESI exam is the nationally standardized exam with a predictability factor for success in VN programs. The exam is six hours. I would not want to have to take it myself. They must pass at a 70% pass rate. I'm going in. That'd be good. And they answer questions about anatomy, physiology, chemistry, math, language arts, comprehension, grammar, all of those things, and they must pass with a 70% composite score on all of those to move into the next phase of the application process. Right? Thank you. We'll go ahead and go on beyond that. Thought you might want to see some of the sample questions they have to answer as they go through the entrance test to get into the program. This was one from a sample that we had, and I don't know about you, I had to look at the back of the book. And so, if you want to go on to the next one, next slide, the answer, of course, is C, right? I wouldn't have known that. And we did one more in anatomy and physiology. That was a chemistry question we had, now the A and P question. And, of course, the answer is D. And again, I had to look in the back of the book. Others may not have had to, but I did. Students who attain the 70% on the HESI then move into an interview phase. They're interviewed by our vocational nursing director, one of our teachers and myself. They're given a series of 10 questions, and they're rated on a scale of 1, 3, and 5 on each of those questions as to how they respond. They each have to write answers to three essay questions prior to moving into the last phase, which is a ranking. We take all of the candidates, their applications, their test scores, their interview, their essays, and we rank them 1 to 15. And 15 is not an arbitrary number. We're allowed by the state board to admit 15 students at a time based on the size of our clinical facilities and our community. And so the state board actually tells us, you can take 15 more students into your program at a time, and we can move forward on that. Students, once they're admitted into the program, then go through an extensive background check. They are not only drug-tested, but there's also a background check on their involvement with law enforcement. And we're looking for any red flags, in part for our program, but also for our clinical facilities. We want to assure our facilities that there's nobody of questionable background on their floor working with their patients at any time. There we go. And that's, we just covered that. There we go. Okay. The program is four quarters in length. Each quarter is 17 weeks long. There's a week off between quarters, so they're basically in class for about 71 weeks between the breaks and the classroom time. The hours they attend classes are listed below. So Monday and Tuesday nights, we think about them in theory for three hours each of those nights. They do full days on Thursday and Friday at the clinical sites, and then Saturday morning they're back again doing theory. And so they're very, very invested in what they're doing. We tell students to anticipate the 25 hours a week in class and 25 hours a week at home studying. Our very first class, we had a young lady get married. She turned to her new husband and said, "I'm sorry, we have to wait for the honeymoon until after I'm done with class." She was successful. She made it through the program. The students pay for the program. It's, I think that's the next slide. The admission testing does have a cost, as does the tuition, and the books, and the drug screening. The tuition, we break into four quarters. We do refer students to a number of entities in the community that help them. There are service organizations that provide some scholarships for them. Rotary Club of Vanderburg Village does. The Alpha Club has helped. American Legion has assisted, and Women in Chamber. We also refer them to Workforce Resource Center in Santa Maria to apply for funding, and there's a scholarship application on our website. Part of the reason we're going through national accreditation is we're moving toward what's called Title IV with the Department of Education. Title IV eligibility will allow our students to apply for grants to attend the program, and that's probably, we're hoping, about a year and a half off. Won't be able to have that in place. The students have to complete 1,571 hours in the program. 962 are clinical and the remainder are theory. Once they've done that successfully with, pardon me, 10 quizzes per term, midterm and a final, passing at 75%, we then certify to the state board that they've met our criteria for the program, and we send their package, including fingerprints, to the State Board of Vocational Nursing. The group that graduated in June just received their invitation to pay $200 to take the NCLEX examination, and all of them have passed. We just got the last word a couple of weeks ago that they've all successfully completed the exam and are now not just VNs, but LVNs, Licensed Vocational Nurses, because they've passed the exam. We're excited that we've been able to bring this program to the Lompoc Valley. Our students have responded and done amazingly well, as has our staff, and I'd be more than open to answer any questions you might have about the program.
I think you should crow about your completion rate.
I do, too. Thank you, yes. I agree. If you go to the Board of Vocational Nursing and Psychiatric Technicians website, and you go under Schools, there is actually a hot link to their pass rates. We are listed under Lompoc Unified Adult Education, and if you look at 2007, which is when our first class graduated in November, forward to today, you'll see 100% pass rate across the board. We graduated 23 candidates successfully from the program since we started. We're small, but we're mighty. Thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Who else has a question? Anybody else? Councilwoman Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you for your presentation. My assumption is that there's a close relationship with Lompoc and Cabrillo High School, seeing as the candidates came from those two high schools. What is the integration process that takes place when they're juniors in high school or seniors in high school, or how does that process work?
Actually, they don't all come from Lompoc and Cabrillo High School. A number of them come from our community entities. We have a number of nursing assistants who are working at the comprehensive care center who are interested in furthering their education coming to our program. We do have a relationship, of course, being part of the district. The students do have to go through a nursing assistant, a medical assistant, or an EMT program prior to coming to us. The reason we do that is we know that they have a higher chance of success because they've had patient care experience prior to coming into the program. So there's sort of an intermediate step before they come to us.
Okay, great. So as long as there's communication for those students as to where they can go to get there. Great. Thank you.
Absolutely, yes. Good question.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. Come see us. Come take a look. We'd love to show it off. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, audience, and viewers, while there are no status items to report tonight, there is one matter that I do want to bring to you related to the scheduling of the public hearings for the public, the Phase 1 general plan update. Due to council's understanding that the busy Christmas season is not optimal for good public turnout, council requested staff schedule hearings after the holidays, suggesting hearing dates for January 2012. So, you know, looking at the calendar, the regular council meetings are scheduled January 3rd and 17th. So should council consider special meetings, the dates for consideration are either January 10th, or January 24th, or both dates. So staff is asking council to discuss this matter and advise staff the desired date for the special meetings. And I would note that planning staff has advised that the consultant is available for both these dates.
One of the things I was going to propose to the council tonight would be that we agendize this for the next meeting for a more in-depth discussion, because it was pointed out to me the other day by someone who participated in the process the last time, because it was all taken as a lump, that they attended 11 meetings in succession before their item finally came up. And I think that's probably more than we want people to do again. And a little bit better planning on our part to divide the issue into perhaps some areas that are less controversial, that could be accomplished, and then some that are more controversial that could be put into a special meeting, I think would be a good approach. But I'd like to have this as an agendized item for next meeting so we can sit up here and talk about it, because that's the direction I'd like to go. Councilmember Lingal.
Mr. Mayor, you want to agendize it just to discuss the process?
The division of the topics and setting the dates for those topics.
Okay. Because, okay, we can do that, but my opinion is, I'd like to see the date set for, if, for the 10th, realizing that we may have to go over till the 24th, and that'd give us that opportunity. So that's just my input on the dates. I'd rather see it sooner than later.
I concur with that, but I'd love to have that discussion next meeting and talk about all the pieces of this puzzle, because in thinking about it, there are more pieces than I had originally thought about after people talked to me. So I'd appreciate a second and a third to agendize this for next meeting for a full discussion.
A second.
And a third.
Before I third, no, we're just going to do this to, we can figure out how we're going to break down the general plan, which component we're going to work on the 10th.
On the 10th, or some other dates. I don't think it's realistic to take this whole thing on.
Absolutely not. I'll third it.
Okay. Anything else that someone else would like to add to this? Nope. Okay. Sounds good. And what else do you have, City Administrator?
No other items. Thank you.
Any staff requests and announcements this time? Oral communication. This is your moment to come and talk to us about anything you would like to talk to us about. Come on down, please. State your name.
My name's Robert Cuthbert, City of Lompoc, and I'm here today to present a letter to the city council and city staff, and it's basically an invitation for the mayor and members of city council to come to some of our events. But let me read the letter so everybody knows what's contained in this. Occupy Lompoc would like to invite you to our weekly events at Liberty Park, formerly known as Sculpture Park, at Ocean Avenue and H Street, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM every Saturday. You'll have the opportunity to meet many of your constituents. We come from a wide range of backgrounds, interests, professions, and political affiliations. We have come together because we are concerned about the devastating economic crisis in our community, in the state, in our country. We invite you to come to listen to our stories. We can share our ideas and solutions to the crisis impacting all of us. We meet Saturdays from noon onwards. And also, we have other events, so please do look at our occupylompoc.org for upcoming events that you may wish to attend and sincerely Occupy Lompoc. Speaking for myself, I'd like to say that responsibility for the Great Recession belongs to Wall Street and the national government, but solutions start at the local level. Lompoc City Council members have the opportunity to engage and become part of the solution. Occupy Lompoc looks to your leadership on sustainable growth, fiscal responsibility, and economic development. Also, I'd like to thank my friend, Councilmember Lingal, who came to our first meeting, and I think he found that we aren't following the national model and some of the unfortunate things that have happened in other cities. Occupy Lompoc is unique to this community. It belongs to the city of Lompoc, and it's made up of citizens of Lompoc. From the beginning, we've been in contact with the police. At, in, also, we have our, our events, as you may have seen, at H and Ocean every week. We clean up after ourselves. We're friendly to everybody. We've welcomed all political stripes and so forth and so on. In fact, there is also an individual who's been making a special effort to pull weeds, and we're going to, cultivating around the plants. So we're helping parks and we're acting the community, and we're just doing a real good job. So you're all invited, and I hope you can come. And you have my cellphone number, but you know, a meeting or just coming by and talking. A lot of people just come by, drop by, and say hello. Some of them are, you know, have a serious question, some are supporters, and some are detractors. And right now, I'd like to ask everybody who's with Occupy Lompoc to stand up quietly and show yourselves to your city council. Thank you very much.
Robert, thank you, to you and your group. Obviously, we've had discussions with the police department based on issues in other cities. Guys have been stellar citizens. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, but it's not my group. It's a, it's a very unusual organization. It took me a lot of time to get used to it, but it's, it's a very unique thing, and I still can't really fully explain it, but it's really a phenomenon. This is happening across the country, and it's happening here in Lompoc. People are upset with the direction of our country, and again, you're our local leaders, and we look to your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Martin Schaefer, and I'd like to, first of all, second what Robert has just said. I'm also a member of Occupy Lompoc and the Occupy movement. That said, it's one of those movements where really where you don't join is simply that events take you, take over, and you find that you are actually a member, whether you like it or not, and that's what happened to me. I would like to suggest that you come to our meetings on Saturday at Liberty Park and listen to what we have to say. We are not a top-down organization. We are, we don't have an agenda. We are basically seeking to simply just shift the conversation, to try and think outside of the box, to come up with solutions, and redefine the issues and come up with solutions accordingly. So for instance, an example would be that if it does, if it is the case that our financial situation, our financial crisis, the so-called recession, is a function, is, has been caused by federal government and Wall Street coming together and causing this financial crisis, then the solutions that, austerity measures that are put in place by, on federal, state, and local levels, such as here in Lompoc, would then essentially be punishing the victims, us, and advocating for the perpetrators. And so shifting conversation means simply looking at the situation in different ways, shifting the narrative. The solutions that come out of that can be varied, and, but the fact is, is that we are looking for ways of just thinking of this in different ways. So, and I would like to invite all the council members here on Friday at the Valley of the Flower Church up in Vanderburg Village at 6:30. There's going to be a showing of the Academy Award-winning documentary called Inside Job that is actually going to make that very argument that our financial crisis was a function not of market forces but of criminality and fraudulent behavior on the part of our financial institutions and our federal government. And there will be a discussion afterwards, and that's, once again, it's not a matter of trying to convince people. It's, it's about shifting the conversation, looking in the evidence, and deciding for ourselves whether this is the case or not, and what, where do we go from here? So that's really what the Occupy movement is all about. It's an organic movement, and we hope that you can be part of it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Lauren Pressman, and I thank you for this opportunity. I'm also part of Occupy Lompoc. We're a relatively small group compared to the rest of the country and a lot of the groups that we've seen and heard about in the news, but it feels pretty good to be part of, even though we're a small group, we're part of a much larger group as well. And I, and I'm not going to repeat everything that was said, but only to invite you and to come meet us. You don't have to agree with us. We can have some discussions and just to kind of see who's out there. I do want to make sure that, I wanted just to, want, repeat one more thing, that we do have a website, occupylompoc.org, and it will have updates as far as what kinds of activities we're doing. So we do meet on Saturdays, but as Martin mentioned, there's a Friday evening movie. Also, December 17th, which is a Saturday afternoon, at the public library, there's going to be a nonviolent communication training for interested people. It's free to the public, and that is also communication training for interested people. It's free to the public, and that is also going to be offered. I just wanted to also tell what happened last Saturday, which was pretty fun. There was, it's called the Really, Really Free Market. And members of Occupy Lompoc, we all brought various items from our homes, clothing, household goods, books, and offered it to the community for free. And so we set up tables. It was, I was impressed with how well it was organized, and everybody really pitched in. People from the community came up and looked over our stuff, and one person, I had this kind of strange 60s-looking lamp, and she said, "How much?" And I said, "Oh, you can just take it." And she just couldn't believe it. So we also have food. People partook of what we brought. And it was just a nice feeling, just a real community, a sense of community. So that was something that was a real highlight. Just in closing, I brought a copy of the article that was in Lompoc Record regarding creating an identity for Lompoc. And we don't have all the solutions, obviously. I don't know that any one group or person has solutions to everything, but I think it's really important to dialogue and to come up with various ideas. And maybe that's something that if you are able to come meet with us, we can talk about that. And we can give you what our ideas are as far as what can help revitalize Lompoc. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, Mr. Cuthbert did mention that I was out there first meeting. I went more out of curiosity than anything else. We all see pictures in the newspaper, look at articles on television, and we see some terrible things happening. Out of curiosity, I went to this group. I found none of that with this group. I found a bunch of very concerned citizens. There were people from both sides. They mentioned all political parties. There were Republicans, there were Democrats. They were just concerned about our community. And I want to really compliment you guys. It's not what you see in the newspaper. This group is not what you see in the newspaper. This group is not what you see on television. They have the same original goal, and that's to help this community, help the nation, but it's not what you see. So I'll be there one of these Saturdays, not every Saturday, but a couple Saturdays, because I think you're doing a great job. So I want to thank you.
Okay. Who else would like to speak to us?
I have a different subject.
Come on down. This is any subject you want.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mary Saladino, a resident of Lompoc. And I would like to make a few comments about economic development for our city. Respectfully, I would like the following areas, some within our city and some in surrounding general community areas, to be considered. I want to emphasize the quality of what we have already established in our community. And I have lived here in Lompoc as a citizen since 1964 and have owned a residence since 1965. I'm a registered voter and have voted in every election since age 21. I have heard our city council say, and I agree, that Lompoc's wealth and treasure is its people, who love, support, and enhance our beautiful valley. My first hope is that we never lose that quality of community, compassion, nurturing and caring for one another. And from the tone of what I heard from the earlier speakers, I think that you are going about it in a way that might enhance that. And thank you for that. Because our problems are national as well as local, and all of them need to be, all of those problems need to be fixed. But is any community perfect and hasn't finished growing? No. Then how should it grow? I am sure that we all want some growth. Please remember that the quality of the growth is key. The quality of the growth is key. Personally, I like to enhance, I would like the enhancement of the quality that has already exist, that already exists, through the past efforts of so many helping and healing hands. We have wonderful people in this community who work very hard to make it a great place for us to live. It's not fantastic on a national scale, but it has a lot of quality. And Mayor, I have heard you say that the quality and treasure of our community is the wealth and treasure of our people, or something similar to that. Thank you. I agree. What we do have is a state-of-the-art hospital and medical center. And I would like for you to please contact the leaders of the wonderful medical center and inquire if they could please identify any areas of economic growth that would support and enhance their new facility, as well as the old hospital facility that still exists, and as well as our old swimming pool. I have heard people say they think it's an eyesore. What is ugly about it? It's a perfectly good building in good condition. We just haven't discovered a fantastic use for it yet, but it is being used to store needed equipment that could someday be used. Perhaps if we work, and I put this down, if we work for developing a school of nursing program, such as in early stages in our town, and I'm sorry that Susan is not here now, but that's a wonderful idea. Not just a vocational nursing school, but let's make it famous throughout the country. Let's dream big. We all need nurses. Think of our wounded warriors that are coming home. And besides, we're all becoming senior citizens. Agriculture must be preserved, because we all like to eat. Who doesn't? Perhaps the flower seed growers have sadly decided to move elsewhere, but the land must be preserved for agricultural purposes. In addition to that, our Lompoc Unified School District has one of the very best Future Farmers of America chapters in America, right here in our very own town. Let's find out from them how we can enhance agriculture in our community. It's very unique. And just think how much development is going on all over the country. Concrete and steel does not grow food. Surely, we must support our school district. And also, Santa Barbara County has an excellent farm bureau. Okay, there's more here, but I'll just leave it. We have wonderful quality here. Let's preserve it. Let's don't lose it as we grow. Thank you.
We'll be taking this subject up some more, so don't forget to bring back the rest. Thank you. And just two things I could announce. The Lompoc Community Healthcare District has submitted the first draft architectural plans for the remodel of the old hospital facility to the treatment facility for first responders and military personnel and registered nurses. And that is in here, in-house, now being reviewed. We are fortunate that they decided to bring that to us rather than taking it through the state, who is giving them a hard time. So those fees will come to the City of Lompoc rather than the state of California. We thank them for that, and we hope we can turn it around in about 10% of the time that the state would have taken. And on the other side of town, Walmart has turned in their drawings for the expansion of the store. Sorry, Fred. Had to get a commercial in. Come on down.
Good evening. I'm Fred Biddle. I've owned and operated Santa Fe Mortgage here for the last 18 years, and some of you have been my customers. I thank you. I'm here representing the Lompoc Valley Association of Realtors and its affiliates. Probably most of you are aware, having been to Rotary meetings, I think you've all been there, all five of the members at one time or another. So we, you know, we're a diverse group, and the Association of Realtors has a big concern right now with respect to some of the zoning things that are going on. And it's been an ongoing play. And we recognize that there's an opportunity for city council to take advantage of the once-every-10-year general plan update. In my opinion, the way I like to say it is to fix some things that are clearly broken. Mixed-use designation is a good example. There's a couple of properties that I was approached in the last two months or so. Fred, can you do a loan for this guy on North G Street? And so as soon as I find out that it's a mixed-use designation, I call around and I get the phone just hung up on me, because Wall Street, the secondary market where the loans that I broker eventually end up, they don't want to have anything to do with that. And so I think that maybe it's time to go back and slowly, methodically, the way that I guess you're intending to do it, piecemeal, take the opportunity to go ahead and address some of the zoning things, whether things need to be downzoned. That hurts values of properties. Mixed use, if somebody can't sell a property, eventually, the only thing that guy can do is wait for a cash offer, and it's not going to be what it's worth. And that hurts too. So if there's an opportunity and a willingness to work together to not rush through something and make decisions that aren't really the best for the community, I think that would be a wise thing for the five of you to do. And we strongly urge you to go ahead and take your time and rely on feedback from some of us. This morning, you know, we had a meeting and talked about a lot of these things. And there's some good ideas out there. And we just want to make sure that we have our input, such as I'm doing right now, but we also are part of the discussion for how these things are laid out, because it's going to affect, we're going, somebody said this morning, we're going to be married to this plan for the next 10 years, so we sure as hell better like it. Okay? It better be something that makes sense for real estate values, for, not just what I do as a lender, but this is for the Realtors and the other affiliates and pest control people and appraisers and physical inspectors and all of this. It impacts the South Side especially greatly. So we just encourage you to go ahead and please take your time and talk amongst each other, get input from the community, and come up with something, and take advantage of the opportunity for the general plan to solve some of the things that are broken now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. One quick thing, Mr. Biddle. I would just urge, if you can ask as many folks from the board who would like to attend, and that goes for any folks in the real estate business, to attend the meeting where we discuss that, because I think that active feedback would be very useful. I've been talking to as many folks as possible, but sometimes when we're up at the table, it's very nice to get some of that feedback while we're making the decision. So I would urge you all to please attend those meetings. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I just wanted to request that you move Item 12 and 13 up closer to, sooner on the agenda. You know, when I came in tonight, I was handed two different things. One said, "We are the 99 percent," and the other one said, "LH CDC Accountability Now. Public funds need public answers." And these two items are dealing with an organization in the community that a lot of people are very interested in. I'd suspect that 99 percent of the people in this community want to know where the millions of dollars have gone, want to know what's going on, want to know where the lawsuits are. They don't understand what's happening. And it's not just in the community of Lompoc. It's in the county of Santa Barbara, and it's outside the county. And so, given the time right now, I think this item is probably the most important thing you'll discuss tonight. And I look around the audience, and people are tired. They have a lot to do. They've come out on a night after they've worked all day. This item is important. We need to talk about it. We need to talk about it publicly when people are still awake and able to pay attention. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I would like to make the suggestion that we move Item Number 12 and 13 after Item 9, and then continue with Item 10, 11, and 14 to finish up the meeting.
I second that.
I'm sorry. Go back to start to hit on that again. You get your page out.
Sure. I move that we move Item Number 12 and Item Number 13 to follow Item Number 9, and then finish up the meeting with Item Number 10, 11, and 14.
I'll second that. I'll third.
Okay, got it. And just so you all know that we agreed a long time ago, we were going to put the things we asked for at the end of the agenda, which is why those items are at the end of the agenda, because we asked for them. Okay, who else has public comment? Last chance.
We have a motion on the floor.
No, we had a first, second, and third. As far as I was concerned, that was a done deal.
You better do a motion. You have a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. We got to vote.
I was ready to go for it. Okay. Okay, back. Who else has public comment to share with us? Last chance. Going once. Going twice. Sold. Next. We'll come back to the consent calendar. The Item 1, for approval of the minutes on the consent calendar. Item 1, the approval of the minutes on the consent calendar is withdrawn because the, when the amended minute, the amended agenda was placed on the website, the wrong set of minutes were, I guess you would call that drag and drop. So the website didn't match the agenda, so Item 1 is removed at this time. With regard to Item 2, I will be abstaining from check number 30239, made it to Speedy Lock and Safe for $37. I have a question with regard to Item 3, that I would just as soon take and not take the item out unless someone objects, and that would be the Valley Haven Adult Care Program lease agreement. Item 4 is the investment policies of the City of Lompoc and the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency. Item 5 is an amendment to the City Council Handbook Preparation of the Minutes, which is the second reading of a prior action. And Item Number 6 is the award of contract for the water treatment plant filter material hauling services in the amount of $134,000 to the low bidder. Item 7 is the award of contract to purchase four new transit buses. Item 8 is a resolution supporting the proposed legislature, legislation HR 1746, Community Access Preservation Act, which relates to TAP-TV. The council has previously taken a position in support of a similar action, and that didn't fly, and it's coming back around to us for the second time on a new bill in the House. Are there any items someone would like to have withdrawn, or is there a short question someone would like to ask with regard to any of these items? Councilmember Lingel?
Mr. Mayor, I will not pull this item, and I really don't have a question, just a comment. I believe this issue has come up before, and I'd request that staff in the future do this again. Item Number 7 is $615,000. I think that's probably an excessive amount to put on a consent calendar, even though when I asked my questions, I got satisfactory answers. But when we're talking about spending $615,000, I think it's probably proper that we discuss it and let the public hear why we're spending that much money. So in the future, when it comes to an amount, I'd say over a quarter million dollars, that we probably bring it to the regular public meetings.
Part of the budget.
Yeah, it's still.
Part of the budget, but still.
Still a chunk of money to be spent.
Six hundred and fifteen thousand, it's a lot.
Okay, I would prefer over half a million, because we make a lot of purchases.
Okay, under half a million, that's fine.
Okay, bring that up down at the end, and we'll do the first, second, and third. The only question I have with regard to Item Number 3 is the extent to which the community center kitchen will be used by Valley Haven, if that would preclude some other renter of the large rooms from using it simultaneously. And I believe the answer to that is probably no, but I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite Mario Guerrero to answer that for you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. The Valley Haven will be primarily have access to the kitchen during their lunchtime program if needed, but they are very flexible, because they will be utilizing if needed, but they are very flexible, because they will be utilizing the CAC, the nutrition do it as needed, so there is a flexibility with that.
So everybody's coexisted happily in the past. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Who's first?
Well, mine is going to be on his.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
Mario, real quick, I just had a question. How did, so we've had Valley Haven working with CAC before, then?
No, this is a brand-new agreement for Valley Haven being in our buildings.
Okay. Where did we come up with the figure of $22,000?
The, it's $1,200 a month, so it's $14,000 of the 400 for their office space, their one exclusive, the classroom, access to the kitchen, and the storage in the kitchen. And also that they're currently showing interest on utilizing a secondary type of classroom for $25 a day, and their program's six days a week. So currently, they're seeking that being part of their regular program, six days a week, Monday through Saturday. So that will be an additional $25 a day that they do use that secondary, secondary type of classroom for their program, and they could utilize that one or two hours a day, or they're full of eight hours.
So this is basically based on a standard fee that the community center is going to charge for this?
Yes. It'll be a monthly fee for their exclusive use, and then an additional $25 daily for using additional classrooms. So if they wanted to use three, three or four for that day, it would be an additional $25 per classroom. But right now, they're only seeking one additional classroom beyond their $1,200 a month being part of their daily operations.
Okay.
But if they ever chose to do anything else for something special on that day, and we had the space available, they'd be more than happy to utilize that for $25.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your comment about flex, or actually Mario's comment about the flexibility of Valley Haven in the kitchen, I can attest to that. I'm a member of St. Mary's Church, and I'm also on the board there. Valley Haven is currently leasing space from us up there. They're very flexible. When we have, we rent our hall quite frequently. They're very flexible. They move locations for us, different rooms. If we have a function, we can't relocate them, they actually won't show up that day, you know. So they are very flexible, and I think they'll work well with us.
Thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding the consent calendar? Nope. Seeing none, I'd accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the consent calendar with my one-item abstention and the removal of Item 1. Could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Now we're going to move to the appointment of members of the Economic Development Commission. Each of these appointments are by individual council members, and what I'm going to do to make this simple and speedy is I'll ask each council member to name the three people that they wish to appoint to the commission, and then we'll pass that and go on to the next one. Councilmember Martner, would you like to begin?
Yeah, I'm looking and see if the, my appointees are in the audience, and I don't see them. So, I'm sorry. I will be appointing Julie Menuchichi, Janine Osborne, and Terry Hammond.
And now we would move to a vote on those three appointments. Could you vote, please? Unless there's some discussion. Seeing no lights? No. This is an individual decision. And that passes 5-0. And now, Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I think at least a few of my nominees are here, so if you could stand up, I would appreciate that. I'm nominating Robert Smith, Don Thomas, and Jason Montello.
And any comment from the council? Seeing, Councilmember Martner, is your light on, or is just? Okay. Could we vote, please? Or not? Sometimes the buttons just won't cooperate. And that passes 5-0. Sorry about that. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I announce my three, I just want to say a little bit about the process. First of all, I want to thank the 39, 38, 39 people that put in their applications. It was really tough going through these things, because my process was, I'm just going to go through and throw out the ones that I didn't think were going to fit. Well, guess what? I think there was maybe one that I thought may not fit. All really good people. So if you're not selected, I apologize, because you're all good people. Then I just started with the remaining of them, I just sort of put numbers on them as they fit into our categories. And some people that I really think would do a good job on it, unfortunately, I could not select, because I only have three votes, I apologize for that. But anyway, the three that I have selected are Dulcy Sin, Alice Milligan, and Steve Pepe, which, Steve Pepe owns Pepe Vineyards. And I was surprised, he was the only wine individual, in the wine industry, that actually applied, so I'm glad that Steve did apply, because this is a big part of our economy here. So Dulcy Sin, Steve Pepe, and Alice Milligan.
Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And those pass 5-0. And Councilmember Starbuck.
I will echo your comments about the selection process, but being that I was trying to fit categories and all. One person that I wanted to appoint right off the gate, Debbie McCombe, be careful what you wish for, you're on there now. Could you stand, please? There you are, you're on it. I thought hard about my second choice, and I thought that this person, if he was good enough to be in the selection process for the Assistant City Administrator Economic Development Person, that I would go ahead and put him on the Economic Development Committee, and that would be Bob Manning. So, Bob, please. Thank you, you're on. My third choice was one that I rendered hard for a while. I had to think of somebody that had an interest in the future of our kids as much as I think about it myself. And one name stuck out very, very conspicuous to me in this, and I wanted to just say that I think one of the most caring people for our youth, and will probably do a great influx on this committee, would be Don Palmerville. And Don, could you please stand? Don't disappoint, you're going to be there for the kids now.
Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Thank you. And for my, you know, I could have nominated 15 people, I thought we had probably 39. Really what I was looking for was to fill gaps from some of the other appointments and trying to fill in some places. So I settled on Paul Patel from the hotel industry, Tom Davidson from the realty industry, and Rick Rantz, our dean of Allen Hancock College. I don't think I saw any of you here. No. And those are my three nominees. And are there any discussion? And could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I neglected to ask my nominees to stand. I only see one here. Dulcy, you're here. Either Steve or Alice. I know Alice is out there, so hi, Alice. Okay. So anyway, thanks, Dulcy.
Okay, perfect. And it is.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make one comment. I'd like to thank you for nominating Rick Rantz. He's really a biggest stakeholder in the community, and I really appreciate it. I was very torn with that, so, thank you.
Well, you nominated Julie, so we both went in the same directions. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. City Clerk, I would just like to ask that instead of sending a letter with the other openings to everybody who applied, can we send a letter, once the meeting time has been established, asking for these folks' continued participation and attendance at these meetings? Because I think that even if you're not on the commission, I would really, really like your input and your attendance. I want to echo what other council members have stated. This was very difficult up till today. I was, you know, fanning them out and looking, and it was really about trying to cover all of those sectors as well as we could. I chose somebody from, from an industry that I may not have normally, but I wanted to make sure we had somebody from that market sector. So thank you, everybody, so much for your applications. Please stay involved, and City Clerk, if you could do that for me. You can include the openings as well, but more if we could just focus that on continued participation, once that meeting time has been set up, please. Thank you.
Okay. Coming back around, and we're going to begin with Item 12. Welcome, Dinah.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Tonight, I'm asking that council approve the recommendation of the Human Services Commission to designate Good Samaritan Shelter as an interim shelter provider for the Marx House, should the current operator no longer be able to operate the shelter. On November 22nd, the Human Services Commission met to review two responses to the city's request for qualifications for shelter services posted on the city's website on November 7th, 2011. The city issued the RFQ in order to develop a contingency plan, should the current operator of the Marx House shelter no longer be able to continue operating. Two agencies, Good Samaritan Shelter and Victory Outreach Lompoc, submitted their qualifications by the deadline of November 14th, 2011. After reviewing the submissions received, receiving public testimony and responses from both agencies present during the meeting, the commission unanimously approved, reporting to council, there was only one qualified response provided by Good Samaritan Shelter that met the RFQ criteria for a complete RFQ submittal. The commission further unanimously approved the recommendation Good Samaritan Shelter be designated as the interim shelter provider for the Marx House, should the current operator no longer be able to operate the shelter. The commission noted during the meeting, the commission's actions should in no way be interpreted as a negative reflection of Victory Outreach Lompoc, and the important community contribution the organization provides. But their determination is based on a strict adherence to the RFQ selection criteria. The RFQ requirements were taken from the Human Services application, and a copy of the RFQ is attached to this report. The commission will be providing a letter memorializing its recommendations and discussion. However, due to the Brown Act, that letter could not be approved outside of a public meeting, and the commission's next meeting actually was yesterday, December 5th. Therefore, that letter will be provided to the council by email in the morning of December 6th, and hard copies will be provided to the council and made available to the public at the council's December 6th meeting. That letter was provided to council. Unfortunately, I did not make copies for the public. However, I can make copies, should there be a request for them. And we can, oh, you did? Thank you, thank you. The clerk says she made some, so. And with that, I conclude my staff report. We do have Barbara Holt, chairperson of the Human Services Commission, who is here this evening. I believe she will also make an oral report from the commission, and then I can take questions, should there be any.
Good evening, Barbara.
Mayor, councilpeople, and I have a copy of the letter, if you want me to read it. But one of the things I wanted to make sure you were aware of the fact was, and this was discussed at our meeting last night, and the rest of the commission is in agreement, that we express our knowledge that, you know, it had, in selecting Good Sam, it had nothing to do with who was what, or what they were, or anything like that. But Victory Outreach has absolutely no experience in dealing with the homeless of women and children or families. They are presently dealing with a recovery program, which are homeless, and they serve 15 males. And I believe that they're there for, you know, they sign a contract, they're there for a certain period of time. The type of homelessness that we're dealing with in either the Marx House, which is what we were addressing last night, and also which is very close to the commission's heart, which is Bridge House, they are a completely different animal than a recovery person. Not that, you know, they're all the, everybody deserves the best, but we need somebody who can take care of the children and the women, and that they will feel safe where they're going. And that was our main concern. Granted, there, and there's been much said, I think, about the fact that the one application wasn't complete, didn't include everything. That wasn't the main factor of why they weren't selected. It was because of what they do and how they present. And I mean, I'm sure that there are many people within this community who have, you know, taken advantage of the Victory Outreach, and it has nothing to do with them. And I think we want to be very careful, because it's been a hard time, and we need to get the best foot forward and give the best we can to the homeless and the women, children, and the families. And if you would like.
Thank you. I think there's some questions. Who was first? Councilmember Lingle.
Barbara, I think it's, if you wouldn't, if you'd just take a minute. There was one sentence in your, in your letter, excuse me, but I think it's important that the public hear, and that was something to the effect of, this is not meant as any negative image of Victory Outreach, that for what they do, they do a good job.
They do an excellent job.
Yeah. Would you just, there one sentence in there, they state, because I think it's real important that the public realize that it's not a negative decision on Victory Outreach. Could you?
I don't know which one you're referring to, Councilmember Lingle.
Well, basically.
There's two motions that we passed. Is it one of the motions that you're referring to?
I'll paraphrase it. It's just, for the public, this should not be looked at as a negative image of Victory Outreach.
Okay. One of the commissioners were pleased that the two local organizations stepped forward to offer assistance during this time of transition for the city services to the homeless. We hope that both organizations will continue to contribute to the support services of the homeless and displaced individuals in our community.
Okay. Actually, excuse me, actually, it's in the staff report.
Oh, okay.
And it says, "The commission noted during the meeting that the commissioner's action should have no, it should be in no way interpreted as a negative reflection on Victory Outreach of Lompoc." And I think that's real important for the public to know. Victory Outreach is a good organization. But thank you, Barbara.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention that Councilmember Costa and I did attend the Human Services Commission on November 22nd, and I'd like to commend your commission and your commissioners for the very professional job on it. I felt that it was very above board, and every angle was looked at, so I'm very confident in casting my vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item at this time? Nope, somebody got up, but all he did was move. Going, going, gone. Okay, back to council. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I wanted to make a comment in regards to where we are at in this process. I'm very excited to see that we've gone out for the RFQ, and that hopefully, with consensus, we'll be able to put somebody in as the interim. Understanding that this is going in case of an emergency, as it states, that the provider can no longer operate or provide the services to that shelter. Now, that most likely may happen, however, we do not have that information for sure. So what I wanted to bring up to the council is, if you believe that this time is the most appropriate, is a quick discussion on what the next step should be in the process. Meaning, I believe that there should be discussion with the county and with foundations that needs to take place, and a long-term plan should be created, so we can put out an actual RFP, not for the interim services, but for the long-range services, understanding that when you put out a RFP for services, it would be better suited to be both the Marx House and the Bridge House, not just the Marx House, as we are reviewing this today. Of course, hoping that the county would be involved in that, and also including these organizations, as well as others, coming out again for a long-term RFP, instead of just the interim RFQ. So I wanted to bring that up, because for me, this is a short-term plan, and I do think that we need to look at the long-term for our shelter services in our community as well. Thank you.
Joe, with the way this was noticed, could we have a wider discussion?
From what I'm understanding, Councilmember Costa's suggesting is to see if there's a consensus on the council doing that, and its direction to staff. So that's what I'm understanding, is what her goal was. understanding is what her goal was.
So let's resolve this, and then we'll pick that up real quick at the end, okay? Everybody good with that? Is there any other discussion with, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Costa, but I think we need to make a motion and vote on this, and then perhaps that, take that later. So I'm ready to make the motion that the Council approves the recommendation of the Human Service Commission to designate Good Samaritan Shelter as an interim shelter provider for the Marx House, should the current operator no longer be able to operate the shelter.
Councilmember Starbuck?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay. And is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing no lights, could we move to a vote, please? That passes 5-0, thank you. And thank you to the Human Services Commission for your work on very short notice, and taking us one step further down this long and torturous road. And I think we would be remiss if we didn't point out that, as a Council and as a Human Services Commission, we've gotten further down the road than our friends over at the county, because we have a plan. And now, to the first, second, and third for what you want to have agendized in the future, please.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'm not sure if it needs to be agendized or come back as a report, or go to the Human Services Commission. That's why I'm bringing it up for a quick discussion today. What I mostly am looking for is asking the staff to get into some discussions with the county and local foundations, and possibly other nonprofits who aren't interested in applying for this, but who may have some, some experience and some help with this, to focus on what the long-term plan is. So just getting staff going on that.
Okay, so would you be happy with agendizing this for a staff presentation in the near future?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
Would you be happy with agendizing this subject for a staff presentation in the near future? Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
Yes, I feel that there are some communications that can be made before they come back to us. I don't think it needs to come back now. I think we can give some direction for action today, and then they can come back to us at that point, and we can decide if we want to go to Human Services, or where to go to next.
Councilmember Martin? Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm hearing, and maybe I can, I'm hearing that what Councilmember Costa's suggesting is that staff make some contact and come up with some approach, including the county, to do an overall future use plan for both the Marx House and the Bridge House.
Is that where you're going, Councilmember Costa?
Homeless services in general, but yes.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Martin?
I would like to add that it's not just the city staff and the county staff, but I would like to have the Human Services Commissions on both, the city and the county, to be involved in this proposal, because it is the Human Services Commissions that are really the experts and understand what the needs and what organizations provide what services. So as far as a direction, I would really request to add the Human Services Commission into that proposal, and that would entail the Human Services Commission meets and discusses it in, you know, in their meetings.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Yeah, that was the direction I was looking for. I wasn't sure where we wanted to go, but I'm more than comfortable with that. I think that that's a great idea, especially the County Human Services Commission, who I've spoken to some members of, and they seem more than willing to be discussing as well. And as I mentioned, as part of that piece, also looking at possible funding sources, because to provide quality shelter services in our community, this is really going to need to be a collaborative effort, so getting everybody at the table together, including the foundations and the Human Services Commissions, I would agree, is a great idea.
I'm uncomfortable with giving instructions without an agenda item that the public can speak to. We're back here in two weeks, and we have an interim plan in place, and I would really ask you to let the staff and everybody come up with something and bring it back to us, so that it could be shared with the public, because some of these things have, because of a number of issues that none of us can talk about, have been handled behind closed doors for a long time, and I'd like every opportunity for the public to get a word in on it as we're discussing it. So if you would be kind enough to, I agree with everything that you're saying, but I'd like it to come back for a fuller discussion, that the public can be involved in, please. Yeah, I'm, you guys are the first and the second, so I'm just asking if you would mind incorporating that, and then I'd feel really good about this.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I think that that's fine. The staff report that we need to come back would really only need to essentially be a page restating what we've requested, just gaining their, our official approval.
Yes, absolutely.
That's fine with me, thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. I therefore become the third. You guys want to be a fourth and a fifth? We could just... No, it's just a, it's a request for an agenda item. But you can be a fourth and a fifth anyway. Yeah? Okay, sounds good. And now, moving to item 13.
Good evening again, Mayor, and members of City Council. Staff recommends that Council receive a report on outstanding loans made to the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation, and potential liability for repayment of the federal loans, and provide direction to staff on further action. At the meeting of November 15th, 2011, Council requested staff provide a report on outstanding loans and for potential liability for repayment of the federal loans made to the Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation. The city of Lompoc began working with the Lomp, with the Lompoc Housing Assistance Corporation, or LHAC, the predecessor to the Lompoc Housing Community Development Corporation, or LHCDC, in 1990, 91. The organization's stated mission was the development of affordable housing. Most of the city's outstanding loans made to LHCDC were for the acquisition or development of affordable housing. Funds used for these projects included federal home and community development block grant funds. The liability of potential repayment of those loans may occur due to affordability covenants, which are recorded against the loan, I'm sorry, record against the subject properties to memorialize conditions under which loans were made to acquire or develop affordable housing. These covenants require the subject properties to be used for the operation of affordable housing, with restrictions on rent levels, income of tenants, and other requirements. In addition to affordable housing, city loans were made to LHAC for a 19-bed transitional housing shelter facility, or the Marx House, as well as city redevelopment agency loans on one commercial property, the Lompoc Theater, which remain outstanding. The length of the affordable period under the, under the federal home program depends on the amount of home funds invested in the property, and ranges from five years to 15 years for acquisition or rehabilitation, and 20 years for new construction. The CDBG program does not require a specific affordability period, once the housing is provided. CDBG regulations state, "The city shall adopt and make public its standards for determining affordable rents, which are contained in loan agreements." The city adopted standard required, I'm sorry, the city adopted standard required a 30-year affordability covenant be placed on affordable housing property. Although not part of any federal funding, properties that were assisted with low and moderate-income housing trust fund monies from the redevelopment agency required a 55-year affordability covenant, even if the RDA funds were repaid. Therefore, the effective periods of the city and agency's affordability covenants exceeded the federal requirement. In the event of foreclosure, the federal regulations require the city to ensure the subject properties remain compliant with U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development applicable regulations, including providing affordable housing, meeting a specified affordability covenant period, or in meeting a national objective of providing a benefit to low and moderate-income persons. If any of these requirements are not met, then is the city required to repay the federal funds to HUD. Staff has prepared a chart, which shows outstanding loans made to LHCDC. Council asked staff to also provide an analysis of each loan, examining several factors. When taken together, provide a profile of risk that each loan poses for potential repayment to HUD. And I think what I'll do is... Okay. The following factors were considered. Existence of an affordability covenant on the property. Position of the affordability covenant on the title of the property. Whether the property has entered receivership. Whether the receivership action recognized and preserved the affordability covenant provisions, and compliance of the project with the original intentions of the federal loan. Based on those criteria, the chart has categorized LHCDC loans as being either at no, low, or high risk of repayment, based on information regarding the previously identified five factors.
Dinah, there's a couple of numbers missing on the slide. 30-year note due, one should read 2028, and the one below it should read 2027. The last digit fell off.
Okay, on the term? Yeah. Yeah, I apologize for that. The slide is on the board for kind of illustrative purposes, but I've also made a copy for Council. It's a part of the, it was an attachment to the staff report, so I'm going to actually go through this section by section. Loans defined as no risk are those loans which were funded by the CDBG program and affordable housing was provided for some period of time, or have an affordability covenant recorded prior to the private loan. Loans defined as low risk are those loans which are under receivership, where the affordability covenants have been preserved as a part of the judicial receivership order, or were used to fund a project which included federal funds, and where there was no private lender involved, as in the case of the Marx House. Loans defined as high risk are those loans which, loans where the property is not compliant with federal regulations, or does not meet a HUD national objective, or loans where the affordability covenant is junior to a senior loan. The attached chart shows the city's investment of CDBG home or local redevelopment agency funds, and that's under the column, "The Amount of City Investment." The lien holder, the source of funds, the loan origination date, and the loan term are shown. The column, "City Home in County Loan," shows the amount of city home funds which were included in a county home loan document applicable to that property. In those loans, both city and county home funds were loaned to the project. The position of the C, the city RDA loan shows where the recorded loan appears on the property title. The position of the affordability covenant shows the position where the affordability covenant is recorded on the property title. If an affordability covenant was recorded prior to another lien, then the affordability covenant remains on the property if the property is foreclosed upon due to non-payment. So the first slide shows the Marx House. The city has two loans on the Marx House. The Marx House is considered at no risk of repayment of federal funds, because the property has been used as a transitional shelter for many years. We could go to the next slide. The Lompoc Theater has two loans. A $700,000 loan by the redevelopment agency in first loan position, a $225,000 CDBG loan in second loan position, and a third loan held by a private owner. The CDBG loan was made in accordance with the HUD national objective to address a blighted and deteriorated facility in a low and moderate-income area of the city. Because the theater remains in disrepair, the CDBG loan could be required to be repaid if the blighting conditions remain unaddressed. Due to the fact that it is uncertain when this important project will proceed, this loan has been rated as high-risk. The city and agency do not have any repayment obligation of the $700,000 RDA loan. Six LHCDC properties are shown on the chart as being in receivership with Pacific Western Bank. During the foreclosure proceedings, the judicial order required Pacific Western Bank adhere to the affordability covenants recorded against those properties. Therefore, those properties are considered at low risk of repayment of federal funds. Although it is possible, it is not likely, the court could at some point in the proceedings remove that protection of the covenants, especially since Pacific Western Bank has indicated its desire, its desire is to maintain those covenants. Three properties under the Pacific Western receivership received CDBG loans. Courtyard South Apartments, the B Street property, and 328 North K Street. Since the CDBG, CDBG loans on these properties did not require long-term affordability covenants, and low and moderate-income families have been assisted, the CDBG loans on those properties are classified as no risk of repayment of CDBG funds to HUD. In the case of the property at, I'm sorry, 709 to 713 Northeast Street, Southern Court Apartments, that's the next one, under Citibank receivership, upon which Citibank is foreclosing, the affordability covenant was recorded after the bank loan. The preservation of the affordability covenant remains uncertain until the foreclosure proceedings are completed, and for that reason, this loan is shown as at high risk of repayment, until and unless the preservation of the affordability covenant is resolved during the judicial foreclosure proceedings. The chart also shows there are two properties with deeds of trust held by private individuals, the Jay and Volker Apartments. The property at 501 513 North S Street and 508 North T Street has a recorded affordability covenant senior to the private loan, which preserves the affordability covenant in the event of foreclosure. The second private ownership property at 500 to 504 North T Street does not have an affordability covenant recorded prior to the private loan, and in a foreclosure by the lender, the affordability covenant of the property would be lost. Since the CDBG loans on these properties did not require long-term affordability covenants, and low and moderate-income families were initially assisted and continue to be assisted, the CDBG loans on these properties are classified as no risk of repayment of CDBG funds to HUD. The city's potential liability for repayment of federal funds made to LHCDC or its predecessor LHAC from 1991 to 2007 is reviewed based on factors which contribute to loans classified as being at either high, low, or no risk of repayment to HUD. To summarize, the total value of outstanding, outstanding federal and RDA loans shown is Of that total, $1,542,316 are... Of that total, $1,542,316 are no risk, $857,563 are at low risk, and $300,000 are at high-risk loans. And with that, I conclude my staff presentation, and I'm available to take questions.
For the city attorney, with regard to the properties in receivership with Pacific Western Bank, where the affordability covenant is recorded in first position, is there any normal way that they would be able to remove those covenants if they completed a foreclosure? Because they were recorded before their note?
If the CDBG or home covenants are the ones that are in first place, which is why it's on that list, no, they would not be. And if that were true, then they would have been placed in the no financial liability risk position. But because the ones that are shown as first are actually because RDA covenants were also filed, and it's not absolutely clear whether HUD would say the RDA restrictions are exactly enough the same as our restrictions were, we put it in the low risk.
So there's some small incremental risk, be it quite unlikely?
I think so.
You think it quite unlikely?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure. Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of general questions, and then I'm going to go into specifics for certain properties. But let me make a general statement. I find the report incomplete, and I will give you details as to why the report is incomplete. There are, there is plenty of missing information here. I would like to have seen another column where it is stated really for how long the covenant requirements are, and I really would like to have seen this for each of the properties listed here. I do not agree with your assessment or the staff assessment regarding low, high, and no financial liability as far as risk. I think you either have risk or you don't have risk. And I will explain, and I will go through certain details as to why I see that the categories that we're putting here were rather arbitrary, and there is really no facts behind it to call something low risk or no risk. But let me ask you some general questions. And the first question is, is there a liability on loans that have been paid off, but those properties did not satisfy the covenant requirements?
The status of a loan, whether it was paid off or is still outstanding, there's still a balance on the loan, does not impact the issue of repayment. The issue of repayment has to do with whether or not the benefit is still being provided to the tenants.
So you are accounting for all of those loans that have been paid off, that you are accounting for a certain risk that they have been paid off, but however, the covenant's requirements were not enforced, or they did not exist. Are you accounting for that risk? We do have many reports which states that all of LHCDC properties have been out of compliance as far as covenant requirements since 2007. This is 2011. There are four years in which these properties have been out of compliance. Is there any liability to return monies on those properties that have been without And if so, are they in this list?
Well, the properties that have been noncompliant in reporting are on this list.
And the liability because they're noncompliant, there is a liability, there is a risk that HUD may decide to come here tomorrow and say, "Property X has been out of compliance since 2007, therefore, city, you have to return monies to the federal government because they have been out of compliance."
Certainly HUD can come and find a concern or a finding that reports have not been submitted by LHCDC. Whether or not HUD will then draw a second conclusion and state that there was no benefit provided to the tenants, I think is a, is a second conclusion that HUD would have to make. The concern is the lack of reporting. But HUD would also need to find that there are no low-income families benefiting at the properties.
And let's say that HUD decides to do that, is there a liability for the city to return monies? I just want a yes or no answer.
I believe there is a liability.
Okay, and it's not included on this list. The second general-
Excuse me, just to be clear, the, if, if there were low-income residents there, there isn't liability to have to repay the funding. So part of the analysis that we did, because, it certainly would have been possible for us to, what I'll say is, take the easy road and put everything in a high-risk category because then we would have been covered in terms of staff not ever giving you information that could potentially someone find and say, "Aha, you're wrong." We thought, and personally I thought, and I think the team thought, that to better serve the council, we needed to give some professional analysis to those risk factors, which is really what the risk factor points were. And so what we did is we took into consideration the things that are noted in the staff report, and came up with our best judgment as to whether or not we thought there was a possibility that, not a possibility, a likelihood that there would be a repayment required, more of a likelihood to be a repayment required, and a really high likelihood to be a repayment required. And so that's why these columns are set up this way. And so the response to, that I would give to your question, Commissioner, Councilmember Martner, is that, that is unlikely that HUD would come in and say, "There's no reports, and there's no low, low-income people weren't served there," because we know they were.
My second general question is, the categories under the receivership. Pacific Western Bank holds receivership of properties for a limited period of time. Santa Barbara County Legal Council informed county supervisors that Pacific Western Bank, legal council said the bank had an interest in the properties continuing as affordable units under covenants. Under questioning from the county supervisors, county legal council said their interest is not binding nor guaranteed. I believe choosing to list these liability amounts under low risk is ludicrous. Under any circumstances, because the receivership is temporary, the receivership is only perhaps for a year, the banks may decide to do whatever they want with those properties a year from now. And if we had the information as to for how long the covenant requirement existed on these properties, a year from now, we would be on the hook for all of those properties if the banks decided to sell them and not have a legal binding document that states that the affordability requirements have to be met. So I really can see how you can call this low risk. To me, it's high risk because in a year from now, we don't know what the banks are going to do.
If I may, through the mayor, again, the same discussion that I just had regarding why these columns were put in place, it was really my suggestion to staff that we need to better identify for the council, based on our professional judgment, what the risk likelihood is. And so, because when, when I'm providing analysis, I need to take into consideration all the things that are applicable at a given moment in time, and what information we have available to us. And again, we could have ended up saying, because there's a possibility, we're going to put them all in the high risk, but that, that wouldn't have been serving, I believe, the purpose of what, what our obligation is, which is to give you the best information and professional judgment that we can provide to you. And so that's why the columns are set up the way they are, and that's why the risk categories and determinations were made.
If I could also just add that, under the position of the affordability covenant, so that would be one column over from the no liability, for all of the Pacific Western properties, there is a recorded covenant in first position on all of those properties. That covenant precedes the senior loan or the private loan. So that is a preservation of the affordability on that property.
So you're telling me that Pacific-
It precedes the private loan.
So once Pacific Western Bank forecloses these properties, they're going to have to maintain the affordability requirement, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Because of this proceeding? Well, I would like to get actually a written statement on that fact that that is true.
That's true. However, as I said earlier, the issue there is, it may be RDA covenants that are going to be in priority position, and because we can't say for sure that HUD will agree that because there's RDA covenants, that's enough to satisfy the home covenants, we didn't, I didn't, and the team didn't feel comfortable sticking it into the no liability column, but we thought it'd go in the, I mean, in the no liability column, but it was appropriate to put it in the low liability column.
So basically, it's not clear whether HUD will accept the RDA covenant even though it might be superseding?
It's not, it's not that they won't, they won't accept it satisfying all the things that the HUD covenant requirement would have been needing to satisfy.
Okay. So we still are convinced that Pacific Western Bank will have to dispose of those properties or manages them, and they will continue to stay under low-income housing.
The covenant that the redevelopment agency recorded against those properties are superior to the-
I understand that.
-Pacific loans, and because of that, whoever ends up owning that property, if Pacific Western forecloses, and that's the way those people own that property, the only, the only way those people are going to own the property is if that, is with that covenant still in place.
Okay. So the statement that the legal council at the county made regarding that there was no legal binding is inaccurate? There is a, I mean, you're telling me that there is a legal bounding, binding, which is the RDA superseding the covenants? That's what I understand from what your statement is. So I would like a clarification on that.
I don't know exactly what analysis the county council gave, but if the county council was, was focusing on, which I can understand he would or she would, because they wouldn't have been considering the redevelopment agency covenants because they weren't involved with the redevelopment agency covenants, they were only involved with the federal covenants, the HUD covenants, that comment is true, that because the HUD covenants are secondary to the Pacific Western recorded deeds of trust, if they foreclose on the deed of trust, the HUD covenants go away. Because the RDA has covenants, and because we can't guarantee tonight and say the RDA covenants will satisfy everything HUD wants, it's in the low column.
Okay. The other question is Portobello Apartments and College Park Housing never received their affordable housing initial certification due to lack of data submitted by LHCDC. On what basis do we think that there is no potential liability to return those funds for the years of noncompliance? They've never been compliant.
Were we, I'm sorry, you were referring to Portobello and-
And College Park.
-College Park Apartments?
Mm-hmm.
Those two loans are not on this chart.
Why are they not? They've never, you know, I mean, again, why is this chart not complete?
College Park Apartments are currently being managed by People's Self-Help Housing.
It doesn't matter. The point is, is that at one point in time, they did have monies from the city. And again, for how long is that, that covenant requirement in effect? It's, I mean, that is what the problem that I find here, you're just finding the present sense, but there is a lot of other stuff there. For example, this council voted to return $147,000 not too long ago, correct? That is not here. That should be added to the list because we already returned those monies. We already paid for the liability, but you failed to include it in this report. Again, it's incomplete. The report is incomplete, and it bothers me to see that there is an intent here to make these numbers look less, but for the sake of completion and the public record, that number should have been here because it was a result of not following the HUD requirements. We did return $147,000 to HUD. So your $300,000 right now go automatically to $470 or so.
Well, if I could just, just clarify that the city has not returned $147,000 to HUD yet. We have actually asked HUD to consider that those funds be returned to HUD in the form of CDBG program income. So we haven't returned those funds. We were asking HUD to, to consider accepting that money as CDBG program income, which can be used by the city again. We have not heard from HUD on their answer, but I just wanted to clarify, we, we have not-
Okay. Okay, my understanding was that we were going to return them, and-
That is correct.
And it was a liability.
Councilmember Martner, could you let her finish, please?
No. I'm simply saying that in that case, you are correct, the council did vote to return the funds. The funds have not been returned yet. I just wanted to clarify that. The other issue was, my understanding is that this was a chart prepared on outstanding loans. In other words, loans that still need disposition. Because the T Street property had been considered, and there was a disposition made on that loan, it was not added to this chart, but it was in no way meant to not, not make that information known. I believe that that certainly has been made known in the community, was certainly in the local paper as well.
I will come back later.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Ms. Lockhart, I think you brought up a good point. I noticed that it says outstanding federal and state loans to LHCDC. I was under the impression that it would be all federal and state loans to LHCDC as well, along with Councilmember Martner. So I feel that we'll definitely need to get this back with all the loans. In addition to, a lot of the reason we brought this up actually had to do with the issues of compliance. So although I value the analysis that was done by staff, I would like there to be additional column as well as to how long these properties have been out of compliance, and additionally, as Councilmember Martner requested, how long the covenant requirement is on these properties. My one question is, is there any way to find out if HUD will accept the RDA covenant as in compliance?
We certainly can try to get HUD to give us some input on it. It's rather difficult for HUD to ever give us the input before it's time for them to decide that they want to start taking an action.
Great. So I think that what this kind of gives us is a perfect example. I think on these loans, obviously, the safest thing would have been to have a CDBG covenant as well as an RDA covenant. Is that correct? Or is that not our concern here?
Well, there actually are covenants that are tied to the CDBG funding. It's, it's just that HUD doesn't require that covenant for CDBG funding.
Right. Although I understand that, would it not make sense that in the future, to ensure that we reduce our financial liability, we implement that covenant to ensure that, for example, properties will always be used as affordable housing because that covenant is a first?
That, that's certainly a possible approach that we could negotiate with the people who are actually providing the funding, such as, it wasn't actually Pacific Western Bank was one of their predecessors. It comes to a time of negotiation with the actual funding of the project costs. Typically- Typically, the private bank wants to be first in line and wants us to subordinate all of our covenants and our loans. So if we were to, the likelihood is, if we hadn't subordinated the CDBG covenant, they wouldn't have given the loan, the private lender wouldn't have given the private loan, and then the project wouldn't have gone forward anyway.
And you think that that, in general, in most cases, that's what would take place? There's no way to put that CDBG covenant?
We can try, but they actually, there was actually state law that was passed, and the federal HUD regulations recognize that sometimes to get that private funding, you have to subordinate.
Okay. Well, as a, as a point to the policy discussion that I'm assuming we'll be having soon in the future, I think that that's something to be noted, that if any time possible, that becomes a key component in the negotiation process of putting that, to avoid that financial liability in the future.
Having the policy reflect, that's a good idea, but that's what we do even without that policy.
Okay. Well, I want it reflected in the policy as well. Thank you.
Just so I understand more clearly, the banks who finance will allow a Redevelopment Agency covenant in first place as opposed to these various other covenants because?
I don't know for sure, but my guess is, when the bank did its due diligence, it didn't realize there was an RDA covenant there. If it had realized there was an RDA covenant there, they would have asked for to subordinate that, too.
Okay.
And the reason that's likely is because the RDA covenant was probably two or three years before, and just wasn't caught. That'd be my guess.
Okay. Before I come back to you, Councilmember Martner, I'm going to go down the dais. Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a quick question. Which properties here then do hold RDA covenants?
We did not include that on this chart. However, I do have that information. Courtyard Apartments has an RDA covenant. T and College Apartments has an RDA covenant.
Excuse me real quick. Now, that's 717-721 Courtyard South, or is it Courtyard Apartments at 725-733?
Seven, that's correct. T and College Apartments, and North K Street. All those are RDA covenants in first position. The balance are CDBG and home covenants in first position. And there may also be RDA covenants in second position on those loans as well, but those are at least the ones I noted that are in first position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lockard, I want to thank you for the work that you've put in on this. I think, you know, this is, it's a, it's a good start. I mean, Councilmember Martner has some concerns, and I'm sure we will get those addressed. But I really want to thank you. The idea of having the three columns, no liability, low liability, high liability, I appreciate that. As Councilmember Martner said, it's either liability or no liability. She's right. We could put this all as just one column of liability. I, for one, I, I think the public will enjoy seeing that there are some things that we should probably work on. I like to triage things in the past, in the future. If something is of a low liability, I'm still concerned about that. But I'm not going to put all my efforts in that. I'm going to put my efforts right now in the things that are on the high liability, and make sure that we address those. The low liabilities, we want to address. The no liabilities, if there's even an ounce of liability in there, we want to still address it. But I think this, for the, getting the public to know, you know, we could say that the city has, I guess we could say that we have $2.7 million worth of liability. But it's nice, if we break it down into these categories, the no or near no, low, low and high. The other thing is, you know, the covenants that we have, I, I'd like to, I agree with Councilmember Starbuck, that it would be nice if we have that report, which, which properties have covenants on them, because that will affect the way we look at this in the future, too. Anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me go down the list. Courtyard South, it has, and your category has two loans, $50,000 and $30,000 in the low financial liability. I have minutes here from February 12, 2006, consent calendar, that talks about that property being refinanced. And it talks about the repayment to the city's CDBG loan of $29,875. Is that the $30,000 that you have listed here? Or is that a different number? And then there is a balance of $152,694 used for property improvements at various LHCDC properties, and authorized the city administrator to sign the subordination agreement. What does the $152,000 and the $29,875 have to do with the $50,000 and the $30,000 that you have here?
Councilperson Martner, I would have to investigate that. I'm, at this point, I'm not prepared to respond specifically to that staff report.
Okay. A similar problem in North K, North K Street, 328, 330. And this really troubles me, and I had lots of difficulties in understanding this. Because in the North K, you have a $218,000 that has no financial liability. All of what I could come up in North K was that on, when was this? There was, in July 31, 2001, there was a utilization of Cal HFA Help loan, $75,000. And it has the very same language on the Casa de los Stress, that is put under the low financial liability for $46,000. Both loans have exactly the same language, yet you put the $46,000 on the low financial liability, but you did not put the $218,000, you put it under no financial liability. But if we go and look at the records, and we see when those loans were made, they have the same language. So I don't understand why they have different risk.
Well, I, I can't speak to that specific staff report. I'd have to investigate that. However, the $218,366 was placed in the no financial liability, because it is CDBG funds, because a national objective was met and is still currently being met. There is no specific affordability covenant period required under CDBG, and for those reasons, it's listed under the no liability for repayment.
I understand that, but according to the original minutes, the loans, monies that were funded, used were Cal HFA Help.
That may have been an initial bridge loan that was repaid.
So, so here we have the situation where loans have been repaid, there has been refinancing that has happened, there has been new loans that have occurred, and we cannot make heads of tails of where these monies went, and what really, who do we owe, if we owe any money? Because there's been years of refinancing, repayments, different funds from different pockets being used. So it's, this list is incomplete, because if I really go and look into it with more details, I cannot even match up the numbers. I mean, I'm sorry, I cannot even match the numbers, and I'm trying to understand, okay? And I only work part-time here, okay? So I am just very, you know, I mean, I don't know what to tell you.
Councilperson Martner, I can, I can, I understand your frustration. Every one of these projects involved a development pro forma. In other words, every one of these projects involved multiple sources of money. In some cases, those monies were temporary monies. In other words, they were related to the construction or development of the project, which were then, we say, taken out or repaid with permanent financing. So therefore, you can have a project that may have had multiple sources of funding, but the final project, the one that remains, those sources of funding might be whittled down to two or three, because the temporary monies were repaid. And in the case of, of Cal HFA, those funds were revolved and recycled and put into other projects.
So I think what Councilmember Martner is looking for is this is the last loan at the end of the line for each of these projects, the loan that's in place today. And what she's talking about is a sequence of events for a given project, where, you know, we had Loan A, followed by Loan B, followed by Loan C, and today we have Loan D. And I think that's the difference. So the, this one is the outstanding federal and state loans that are in place today, and what she's looking at are some of the prior ones, from some very substantial reading, as I recall.
Because, as I understand, the federal regulations, depending for how long those covenants requirements are, and if we didn't satisfy them for a certain amount of time, we're liable to return monies. So I still don't know what the liability is for the city.
Okay. Councilmember Martner, what specifically would you like to have on the report?
I would like, I would like for the staff to come back with a more complete analysis. I am not ready to accept this report. And I'm not even done with this. But another one that is very curious, is the Lompoc Theater CDBG that is under high risk for $225,000. And I know that you're going to give me the answer, I mean, and that's a CDBG fund, okay? But you say that there is no requirements for return monies on CDBGs.
No, I'm sorry, Councilperson. Under the theater project, that is still considered under a high financial liability.
Right. And, and my question is, why it is a CDBG loan, so, and you have repeatedly said that CDBG loans are under no obligation to maintain, but they do have this HUD objective, right? The general HUD objective, correct?
That's correct. There is a national objective that each project is required to meet. And then within that, depending on the type of project, whether it was capital development or housing, there may be other rules that apply. So in the case of a CDBG housing project specifically, there's no required affordability time period set by CDBG. However, in the case of the theater, obviously, it falls into a different category. It's capital development. In that case, the national objective, which was slum blight elimination, that objective has not been achieved. That was, the objective was to redevelop. So because it's still outstanding, the, the national objective hasn't been fully realized, that, that remains a risk.
But the, if there is a HUD of national objective to remove blight, aren't all of these properties in a blighted situation shouldn't, I mean, I mean, are we liable for, for that as well? I mean, why are you applying the national HUD objective on the Lompoc Theater, because it's blighted and we don't know when it's going to be fixed? Well, all of these properties are blighted. I mean, why are we not applying the CDBG HUD national objective? Why do you choose one and not all the others?
Councilperson Martin, that's a very good question, and a very good observation, because you are right, that those, those properties have fallen into disrepair. The designation of a national objective occurs at the beginning of a project. In other words, that, that objective has to be established as the rationale for developing the project. So the rationale for the theater project was to accomplish that particular national objective. The national objective for the housing projects was to benefit a low and moderate income population. So all it is, is, it's a, it's a more specific designation applied by HUD. But you're right, it is ironic and unfortunate that the, the properties that should have remained in good repair are not. But it had, it did not have to do with the national objective. The national objective was to provide affordable housing, to provide a benefit to low and moderate income persons.
So where else have we applied the national objective?
The national objectives are applied to CDBG projects. That is a criteria that HUD stipulates, that has to be made at the beginning of a project. So you have to identify whether it's to benefit low and moderate income persons, whether it's what's called area benefit, in other words, the project is in a low mod area, or whether it is to address a slum-like condition. So there are several national objectives, and so every CDBG project has to be provided a national objective. It's just a, it's a regulation specific to the CDBG program, not to home.
So, so the HUD national objective for the Lompoc Theater was to remove all the blight, and since that hasn't occurred, we are at a high risk. What was the national objective for the other CDBG funds?
In that case, it was to benefit low and moderate income persons.
Just to benefit, not to enforce a certain covenant? Not to maintain a certain covenant, affordability covenant? Or was it to maintain a certain affordability covenant?
The objective, the national objective to provide housing to low and moderate income persons did not exclude the provision of affordable housing in the form of a covenant. That was a part of the loan agreement that was signed between the city and the developer. So they're not exclusive.
But the HUD national objective does not require to return the monies for the CDBG funds if the covenants are not maintained? That's what you're saying? The HUD national objective does not require that?
They don't require a specific period, you're right.
A specific period?
Yes.
Okay.
I was going to go for the public. Okay. I want to take a break.
Okay.
And now I'd invite anyone in the public that has a question with regard to this to come on down.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. I just wanted to briefly state, I, I agree with Councilmembers Martner and Costa. I think the report would be more complete and easier to understand, even for people like me who've done, put a lot of research into it, if each, if the covenants on each property were identified, as to when they were recorded, the length of time, depending upon the source, RDA, home, whatever, and then, you know, the obvious, when they expire. That, mostly what I want to talk about tonight, though, is I'm going to go back to the beginning of when, and partly how, all this mess began. So I want to talk about the fact that LHCDC has not submitted a financial audit for the years 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010, and soon it'll be 2011, five years. We've heard a lot of reasons, LHCDC has given us a lot of reasons for their problems. The one thing they've not given us is any facts, any records, and any audits. There's a lot of speculation. It's very easy to speculate, but without an audit, it's nothing but speculation. Recently, both LHCDC Executive Director Sue Erlich and Board President Susan Warrenstrom made comments to reporters, saying that they were under no obligation to produce an audit. Aside, I find that to be an outrageous statement, and it is, in fact, directly contrad- Aside, I find that to be an outrageous statement, and it is in fact directly contradicted by many public, on the record, taped statements to this city council and to the county. I think it's very fitting tonight that Occupy Lompoc came here, Lompoc's little version of Occupy Wall Street. Part of what, part of the genesis for Occupy Wall Street was the nationwide outrage at the lack of accountability for Wall Street, for mortgage firms like Countrywide, that exercised, that committed fraud. We all know that. There's been some fines made. The fines, you know, really aren't even a slap on the hand, they're more like a little ding on the pinky. No one has gone to prison, no one's gone to jail. The fraud is out there, we know it, it's documented. Regulators aren't holding anyone accountable. Jon Stewart had a great program recently and kind of reminded everybody. Now, why on earth did we send Martha Stewart to jail? Because she made $45,000 on a stock dip, but Goldman Sachs can sell its mortgage derivatives to all of its customers that it's actually betting against on its own trading desk. So it's too, the more they sell, the more they got to put in their own pockets. Before, what I want to ask is that before you leave tonight, that this city council put into place some accountability right here in our own corner of the world called Lompoc. I would like to ask this city council to go on record that you will work with the county, whether it's working directly with them, whether it's working with the DA, whether it's working with the grand jury. I would like for you to go on record that you will make sure, find a way, that there is an independent audit, financial audit, conducted of LH CDC's missing years of audits. I would like for you to do the right thing and hold this organization accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance, going.
Mayor of City Council, Joyce Howerton, Lompoc. I don't know about you, but boy, this is really confusing. I know when I look at my bills that if I don't make my house payment, I lose it. It's real simple. And so when I sit here and listen to all this discussion about all this money that just appears to have disappeared and nothing has happened, it's, it's really shocking to me. I was sitting back there thinking, for over 10 years, 10 years, people have questioned this organization, people have come to the city council and asked questions, 10 years. And let me tell you what we've heard in 10 years. Don't touch this. The mayor has said, hands off of this organization. Don't touch this. The board of supervisor, the fourth district board of supervisor says, hands off this organization. Oh, come on, we don't believe that. We don't believe that elected officials would mess around like that. But guess what? Nobody's touched them. It's kind of funny when you think about it, or ironic. I mean, at some point, everybody's got to get honest with this. And the way they're going to get honest is the way Councilwoman Martin is asking questions and demanding accurate answers. I mean, people, I was in Santa Barbara at a meeting, and it was really interesting because whether you know it or not, people are talking about this everywhere. And everybody has, well, I actually know four bets about who's going to be thrown under the bus. You can get into the pool, there're quite, there's quite a bit of money going on, who's going to end up? And I hope to God it's not the people, the staff and the people that have worked their butts off and done what they've been told to do by the elected officials. I hope that whoever goes under that bus is somebody that deserves it. So I was at this meeting, and they were talking about LH CDC. And somebody said, oh my God, have you been to Lompoc? And the other woman said, no, I haven't. She says, oh, you don't want to go there. We did a site visit. It was somebody that they had applied for money for LH CDC, for, for one of their properties. We did a site visit there. I've been to third world countries that look better than that project. And so guess what the discussion was? Not LH CDC, because, you know, the discussion was, how could a city let that happen? How could that happen in a city? How could you have properties that were in such bad disrepair? That people are shocked by them, and yet, it's not one property or two, it's many. So I would say to you, this is a great discussion. I would actually love to see you schedule an evening where you only discuss this and where you lay it out so that every single person in this community understands what happened and what's happening, and most importantly, what's going to happen. Because I'll tell you, there are a lot of people watching this, and a lot of people that are just bottom line fed up. You know, we pay our bills, and by God, we want you to give money to agencies and organizations that pay their bills and do it ethically. And if they don't, then we've got to stop it. So this is, we hope, and I would, I mean, I hope that this is the only agency like this. But we really need to get on top of this. You need to be on top of it. And so I would say to Councilwoman Martin and Costa, and to Councilmen Lynn and Starbuck and Lingel, keep up, ask these questions, ask the hard questions, don't give passes. You know, you demand the answers, and you keep doing it until you get them. Because if you don't demand them of your staff and of LH CDC, I can guarantee you the people of this community will demand them of you. This has just got to stop. I mean, 10 years, it's, at some point, somebody's got to be held responsible. And I hope, I genuinely hope, it's not the poorest of the poor in our community, the very people that this money was supposed to help serve. I hope that they're not the ones that get short shifted on this. Thank you.
I'm absolutely positive when you said mayor, you didn't mean me.
Yeah.
Yes.
I remember.
No, prior? Because I didn't ever give LH CDC a pass on anything. Okay. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll come back to council, and I'm sorry, I don't know who was, who was lit up first.
Mr. Mayor.
Ah, we'll give Bob a chance. We'll go to the right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the comments of Ms. Benham and Ms. Howerton. I've spoken with Ms. Benham more than I have with Ms. Howerton about this, and looking at this report, first of all, I want to say that this council is holding some high standards and is looking for accountability. Both of you know this. I had mentioned at one of my coffees, I believe Ms. Benham was there, is that I am pleased at what has happened. I'm pleased that this big pimple has burst, that there is finally LH CDC is out in the open, okay? I'm pleased this has happened because, Ms. Howerton, you're right, 10 years. I'm looking at this report, and the first date I have here is 1991. I don't see many dates, I don't see, I don't think any dates on here, 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011. This city council, okay? This council, starting with Councilmember Martin and I, and now following up with Councilmember Costa, Mary Lynn, and Councilmember Starbuck, are bringing this to the public. We are demanding accountability. Now, a lot has happened in closed session, granted, and thank you, Ms. Benham, I mean, it's, I'm sure it's because of you, we are finally now coming out more. This, as I said it earlier, is a good start. It may not be as thorough as Councilmember Martin wants, it may not be as thorough as you want, but it is a good start. At least, we're starting to get it together. But please realize that this council is holding people accountable. I mentioned at, I believe Ms. Benham was there, that through this whole process, I have three goals, and I believe this entire council has three goals. First goal is to make sure that the people that are affected by this, the people that live in these properties are not the victims of this, that they have a place to live, that they have heat, that they have lights, that they have sewers. That's our, our first goal, okay? Make sure that the people that are depending on us, the community, are not put out. The second goal that I and this council have is to look after the city interests, financial interests. That's why I was glad to see the no liability, low liability, and high, high liability. We'll go after the high, high liabilities first. Those are the ones that we really have to work on. We're not going to ignore the low liabilities and no liabilities. We're going to continue to work on those, but we have to make sure that we're protecting our, our interests of the city. The third goal that I have, that this council has, and Ms. Benham, I will state right now, as you asked this council to do, myself, and I believe this council, once we obtain goal number one and number two, it doesn't, and they can be concurrent, it doesn't have to be after the fact. If there are people that are criminally negligent, I want to see them come to the surface, this council wants to see them come to the surface, and we will attempt to do that. There's mistakes made. If people made legitimate mistakes, and some of the things, you know, they may, they may be legitimate mistakes, but if there is fraud, if there's misappropriation of taxpayer money, we want to see that happen. And I will tell you right now, I'll tell this city, that I will, and I believe that council is behind me, they can speak up for themselves, that we will attempt to do this, we will make efforts to do this. So, I mean, I'm hoping I'm answering your questions, but please, realize that I am glad that everyone is outraged about this, because we're all outraged about it too. But it was, it didn't happen when we were sitting here. We're trying to correct it right now. It's a big, Ms. Howerton said, what a mess. Believe me, it is a mess. And for our poor staff to try to make heads or tails of it, they're trying, good, trying to do their best with it. And I, again, I want to thank you, Diana. I think this report is a good start, and I really appreciate it, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I want to illustrate, so everyone understands, the difficulty in wrapping your head around all of this. I have a pretty good knowledge of real estate. I've been in business a long time, I understand loans and notes and a lot of things. But this is a very, very complex subject. So here are all the closed session notes starting into this. And here are sets of documents that Councilmember Martin requested, and if I thought about it, I would have brought from my other office a stack that's equally large that deals with other issues with LH CDC. And I don't say that by way of an excuse, because you guys know I love to read documents. But this is probably, no, this is undoubtedly the most complex set of circumstances of anything that I have dealt with in the city. And no matter what level of information we generate, you can always wish for one more thing, and that's not necessarily bad. But from my standpoint, I like the information that I got today, because for the first time I found out that we had first trustee position on our covenants. And that's very, very important. Is there more information? Yes, I'm sure there is. And before we leave, I would like each council member to specifically ask for those pieces of information that they would like added, so that there is no misunderstanding about what someone would produce and bring back, because this is extremely complicated. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'm going to say what I, what information I would like to be added. I don't have any general comments, to be completely honest. I've been really looking at the detailed stuff. So number one, how long have the properties been out of compliance? Number two, how long?
Could you define compliance, please?
The covenants. So affordability covenant being, I'm sure, the main one. How long the covenant requirement is? And I think Councilmember Starbuck brought up a good point. What properties hold RDA covenants? I know you told us, but formalizing into the document, I think, would be helpful. And then the other piece of information I requested, is there any way to find out if HUD will accept the RDA covenant as in compliance? And I know we may not get an answer to that, but something that I would like to try to look into, as far as what our real financial liability is. I think that this, a new chart should include all federal and state loans to LH CDC, not just outstanding loans, including the loans Councilmember Martin discussed.
Are you asking for a list of the ones that have been previously paid off and supplanted by others? Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
That's a good question. If that, if that were to take place, it would need to be somehow incorporated into a timeline. And I don't know how complex that gets.
Let's ask that question. Diana, could you speak to that, please? How many, how many loans would be involved that have been cycled through in the case of some of these properties?
I would need to do, obviously, some research on that. I know that information's available. So it's simply just adding it to this existing chart? We, you know, we might do some kind of mega spreadsheet and then divide it up into sections. But all that information's available, certainly.
Because I think what I'm looking for is something that's very comprehensive, but also very easy to understand. So I think when you incorporate a timeline, I know sometimes those are contradicting statements, when you incorporate a timeline, sometimes it's very easy to follow where something originated and how we got to where we were today. So I think that that would be helpful for myself and possibly for the public as well in understanding this process. So I think that would be helpful. I don't want to overburden you, but because this is such a sensitive issue, I think that time should be invested in something of that nature.
Can I ask a question? I'm just making sure we get this right. Since the, when the loans were paid off, certain portions of it were superseded, the covenants were superseded by other ones. Do you want all of the issues discussed, or do you want just Loan X for X amount superseded by, you know, the next loan? Is that what you're looking for?
I think that that should be sufficient, yes. As long as there was no issue with, I guess you'd have to say when the covenant came in, right? If it was under the original loan?
Yeah, we've got that already up here at the top, the length of the covenant and the covenant source.
Right, but where it came in in that process, if it was superseded, if it came in as the original.
Okay, so what we're looking for is the, the original date, the amount, and the source of the payoff, and the, if, if there was a covenant difference, let's say, would that, would that get it?
Sure, or where in the process the covenant was implemented. And I'm not too concerned about what needs to be part of that timeline, I can, but I mean, you're doing a good job, and I would allow staff to come up with that.
No, I want to, I want to, when we leave here, I want to be sure that they understand specifically what they want, because they delivered what they thought we wanted, and it doesn't seem to be what we wanted. So this time, I want to be sure we get it precisely.
Sure, okay. And I think that, as far as the timeline is concerned of the other loans, I think that that is fine as well.
So I have the date, the amount, and the source of the payoff, and if the covenant was different, let's say, it was different from the follow-on.
Right, and then when, if, at all?
So I have the date, the amount, and the source of the payoff, and if the covenant was different, let's say, was different from the follow-on.
Right, and then when, if at all, there was some kind of supersession with a loan later, correct?
Yeah, the source of the payoff, which would be the superseding loan.
Okay, sure.
Okay, and I'm back to one thing. This compliance one has me concerned, because compliance has been looked at from, from two directions. One would be a compliance with the low-income covenant, and the other would be a property compliance.
I mean, if at all possible, I'd like to see...
I'd like to separate those two. I would find that information valuable. Number one, what's the compliance with the, with the income covenant? And number two, what's the compliance with all other, or property condition, I guess, is the question?
We have made a little, but I'm waiting.
Maintenance?
Well, I...
Are you done?
I have one additional question.
Okay, go ahead, I'm, I'm still writing.
Okay, in regards to the no, low, and high financial liability, would you say it's a true statement that whenever the loan is originally given, it's always categorized as a high financial liability? Because it may not end up occurring, which is what happened with one of the loans on the Lompoc Theater? Or would you say that when, when a loan is given out, it could be categorized as either no, low, or high financial liability?
Well, when a loan is first issued, it should always be a no, or, I mean, no repayment. I mean, when we do a loan, it's to be completely compliant, that the project's going to reach completion, the objective met, the benefits provided. So every loan, at its inception, should be developed to be no liability.
Right, so then when I'm looking at a loan given back in 2001 as a high liability, my question, and this may be for the next step when we're looking at...
It didn't start high liability. I mean, it's, it is today. I mean, these categories are those loans as of today.
So I guess, and that makes sense. What I'm interested in is when we're looking at the policy, and this may need to go there, but I want to state it today, is that I think that this three-tiered system, the no, low, and high, actually can be very useful in tracking those loans. So when we get to a point with an organization where it went from no liability to low liability, that's, that's a red flag. Or definitely from no to high, or low to high, that's another red flag. Does that make sense? I'm trying to utilize this system when we do this in the future as well, so, because I think it's a good system.
I agree with you. I think that when, if that system is implemented on other loans, the definitions of no, low, and high are going to be different, because this is an extraordinary situation. We're talking about properties now in foreclosure, in, in receivership. This is off the charts. What I think you're looking for is a loan, a chart that says, if a project misses a report, misses two reports, is a late pay, then, then that kind of puts it into the low, the medium, the high, because of not complying with terms of the loan. So it's, it's not quite, it's apples and oranges, but I understand what you're saying.
I, I'm not sure I agree it's apples and oranges, but I understand the difference that you're trying to make, and that the definitions of the financial liability are going to be different in those cases. But I think that this would be a key for us to say, when it changes from one category to the next, that's enough to bring it back to council for discussion, or that's a red flag, just like, we know that the high financial liabilities are a huge red flag for us right now. So thank you for that. And so I would like to note that comment be placed for future discussion when we talk about policy. Thank you.
I got it. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the spreadsheet as to what additional information I would like, I will go with all the ones that already have been made. But I think that the scope of this spreadsheet is going beyond. I mean, the mayor just asked for maintenance statuses. Councilmember Costa asked for all the loans. And, and, you know, that's fine, we can put all of that in there, but if that's what we're going to do, then I am going to make some request, additional request. And what this spreadsheet did for me is that it made me go and do my research, and looked, where did these loans come from? So what I'm going to request is to have a history, because when I went and read the minutes, I became extremely alarmed. And you know why? Because I found, and I didn't know this until today, yesterday, when I read some of these minutes, that several of these properties were refinanced, and monies were being taken out. In fact, I have one here, $500,000. I want to know a history as to what loan did that money paid off, and did they acquire another property with, with those loans? And what is the, basically, what's the consequences for HUD regulations? Is it, and this is a legal question, is it legal that, and I have to ask this question, that we use public funds, whether they came from HUD, CDBG, RDA? And we go and buy a property, then we go and refinance that property, and we take those monies and do something else with it? I want to know what is it that the city allowed LHCDC to do? Because you don't know what LHCDC did, but you know what the city allowed them to do. And I want to find that out in each of these loans, because the few loans that I looked at, it became very alarming that, like you said, there's been a history, this was paid off with that, and more monies came here, and then these refinances with more money being taken out. That's all public monies. That's all public funds. And I want to know if, if that was an okay thing to do? And I cannot answer that question. I don't, I don't know, I don't have the answer to that question, but I would really like to know, and I think the public deserves to know, whether we did everything correctly. So there's got to be some information that has to be provided here, because going through minutes from 2001 to 2011 is very difficult, to try to track down what happened with these monies. But as you have heard, people are concerned, they want to know what happened with these monies. And we may not be able to find out, but at least we have to know whether the city followed every step correctly.
Okay, so what I've added to my list is, with the prior loans, the sequence of prior loans and what they paid off, or if there was cash taken out and for what use, is a separate category.
And if we don't know the usage, I want to know how much cash was taken out and the date.
I've got that here.
And out of, you know, and what was the original loan? Did it come from HUD monies? Did it come from CDBG? Did it come from RDA? But the refinance took equities out of those properties that were funded with tax dollars, public monies. And I want to know what happened.
I've got it. Councilmember Starbuck.
Okay, just a couple of things. I'm going to jump right on that also. I'd like to find the pedigree on this, on, on the refinances. I, I think that we should rename the chart from City of Lompoc Outstanding Federal and State to just City of Lompoc Federal State Loans to LHCDC. I feel it's important that we do have the expiration of our affordability covenants on this chart also, and include the RDA covenants. I'd like to include College Park and the T Street Lot in here also in a separate high line. And one of the things that really concerns me is the loss of the $225,000 on the Lompoc Theater. I'd like to know an action we could do that we could maintain that. Could we get away with painting it, or do we have to rebuild it? What is our definition to go ahead and retain that $225,000 for the theater?
I'm still writing. No, I got it, I just got to write.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have one more request.
Okay, hold on just a sec. Let me get, let me make sure I got all this, so I don't have to watch the video three times, only twice. Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And when we talk about liabilities, we're trying to assess here how much money the city is losing, because we are losing this money. It's going away. Another question, and I, you know, I don't have it very clear on my head, but is that if, let's say, all the properties that are in receivership, Pacific Western being the first, we'll probably acquire those properties, and therefore, we're going to lose all of those monies, all of those loans, correctly? That's money lost to the city. What is that amount? Now, that's, again, that's a conjecture, that we will lose those monies, but isn't it likely that we will, since we are second, and third, and fourth? So is this number here, $2.699 million, is money that the city basically lost?
Bye. I need to clarify that, so I get it right. Is your question, will, will the general fund of the city lose this money? Or is your question, will these funds not be repaid for which we are not liable, or both?
Both, okay, so, so, we are not going to be repaid on these loans amounts likely, particularly on all, just about all of them, okay? That money is, I like to have a tally of how much money we basically lost, because of the foreclosures, because there was...
By category.
By category. Now, if any of those that have been lost, but we have a liability for repaid, we're talking about multiplying it by two, correct? Because we lost the original loan, and then in top of it, HUD might come down and say, "You got to pay for it." So it's times two. Am I being incorrect in making that a statement? I think it's fair, isn't it?
That's a way of looking at it. Okay. Any other things to add to this? This is your last chance.
I'm not going to add anything, Mr. Mayor. I think there's more on the table than what we're going to see for a while, or, it's going to take them a long time, anyway. And also, what I think we've done is we've inverted our priorities. From what I'm hearing right now, we are, our top priority right now is throwing the scoundrel in jail. Second priority is making sure that the city gets their money. Our third priority now is, oh, are any people out on the street? This is what is upsetting me right now. I mean, yes, we want to make sure that people are responsible for it, and we will get there, but I don't want to burden our staff right now. We're going to get this information, it's all going to be nice to know information. But another, another discussion, what I've heard right now, is concerned with the people that live in these properties. We're all concerned about what, what, how much money the city is going to lose, and the, how much liability is around the people that made these loans. So I'm not going to add anything to the list. I think we've inverted our list right now, and I'm very disappointed in that.
I think we can go both directions at the same time. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Councilmember Lingel, I'm a little perplexed at your statement. I don't think that this detracts from that whatsoever, especially because we're dealing with the Marx House, which is, you know, the one property that the city has direct influence over individuals living within it. Everything else is privately owned. I know that we have involvement with loans, but I don't think so whatsoever. So I just want to let you know that it's my opinion, that that's always the first priority. This is just something else, I believe, that's happening simultaneously. Thank you.
Okay, with council's permission, I will give this list to the city administrator, and have her quantify what I have written down. And then I would ask that she present the list to each of you. You review the list and make sure that I have accurately recorded specifically what you want, and you sign off on it. And then, once that is done, we will be certain that we get precisely what we are looking for to aid us in this decision. My concern is not that, this is the very last chance to ask for information, because from my standpoint, looking at the chart we got today, helped me a lot and raised questions for the future, but I want to try to make it as easy on staff to get the answers that we want without getting us answers that we don't want. Is anybody good with that?
Mr. Mayor, to get that consensus among the councils to that list, you're going to need to have it, have it done in a public meeting. You can't do it by calling and saying, "The list is okay," or "Add this to the list," or "Take that off the list."
You're not in the front at all. Okay, well, at the next meeting, we'll have this list. So therefore, I need a first, a second, and a third, to bring this back to the next meeting for approval of the list.
Mary Lynn, I think that, Ms. Lockhart, please give me your opinion. I think that you've heard our requests. I don't think we need to agendize the item.
No.
In my opinion.
I want to be sure we get it right, because we obviously didn't satisfy either you or Councilmember Martner tonight, and I want to satisfy you the next time.
I will concur with Mayor Lynn. I think we need to see this list to make sure that the staff does not have confusing and, you know, vague, if you wish, request. So we're trying to understand where the monies are, where the monies went, how much are we liable for, and we want to get a clear picture. So I would think that we need to give very concise, so I would second the motion that Mayor, or the request that Mayor Lynn is making, that this, this list comes back at the next council meeting, council reviews it, and then sends the marching orders to the staff after that.
And a third. I'll go ahead and third it. Thank you. Okay, got that solved. Perfect. And if someone had something that they thought they wanted to have added to it, they could speak to the city administrator, just in case I didn't record everything perfectly. Okay, are there any other questions for Ms. Lockhart? Seeing no lights lit, thank you so very much for all your information. All right, welcome back, and we will now go to Item 10, a resolution of intent to prepare a groundwater management plan. I find you out of order. And our senior administrative analyst, Susan Zagobia. Welcome, Susan.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. The City of Lompoc recognizes the importance of maintaining a sustainable, reliable, and high-quality groundwater supply, and the California Water Code describes the requirements that are necessary for preparation of a groundwater management plan. It's in Section 10750. I'm just going to, in the essence of time, since it's rather late, just briefly go over a couple of the requirements. The first thing is to make available to the public a written statement describing the manner in which the parties can participate in the development of the plan, prepare and implement the plan, include components relating to the monitoring and management of groundwater levels, prepare the plan with other agencies, adopt monitoring protocols that are designed to detect changes in groundwater levels, prepare a map that details the areas of the groundwater basin. And staff is recommending that a groundwater management plan be limited to the city's geographic boundaries within the Lompoc Plain portion of the Lompoc Groundwater Basin. Staff reviewed six proposals in response to RFP, and staff was, is recommending that West Yotes be given the opportunity to prepare the plan. They have extensive experiment, experience, excuse me, with groundwater management basins. Staff did prepare Resolution Number 5751-PRAND11, which concerns the city's intention to prepare a groundwater management plan. If the council approves this resolution, staff will award the groundwater management contract under the city administrator's authority to West Yotes Associates for a not-to-exceed amount of $58,169. The recommendation is that staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number 5751- 5751, paren 11, which notifies the interested parties of the city's intent to prepare a groundwater management plan. And I'm available for any questions.
Just real quick here, I had a few. Does this plan, why do we have to have this when we have the San Yenés River District? They're the ones that are charged with releases of the dam, to charge our aquifers and our groundwater. Do we, are we doubling what they do? And then the other question I had is, the cost of this consultant, this is one of the reasons we have to have it, is to be eligible for funding for construction and groundwater projects administered by the California Department of Water. Do we receive enough money from them to merit paying the consultant for this report?
I think we do, especially in terms of the possibility of future grants. Previously, we did bring to you an urban water management plan, which is mandated. We did mention this plan in there, and a lot of the future grants actually do require a groundwater management plan. We do, and this would not duplicate information.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Councilmember Starbuck somewhat went into the question that I had, but particularly, where will the $58,169 for the consultant be coming from?
This is coming from carryover money that you approved from the last budget, and so it's currently in our budget, in the water budget.
And does this exceed the amount budgeted? Does it, is it less than the amount budgeted? Do we have, do you have the idea of what was budgeted for the consultant, or this wasn't a particular line item, this was just part of the general?
This was budgeted. We did receive, we did receive proposals, and we specifically asked for carryover funds from two different line items to cover this.
Okay, great. You know, in all honesty, I think it's a great exercise to ensure the health and longevity of one of our municipal resources. So I thank you, I mean, I know that this is a mandate, so it's something we got to get done. The other question I have, and obviously, I'm sure I know the answer, but we don't have the expertise in-house to do anything like this?
No, we don't. Thank you.
Seeing no other lights, don't go away. It's now time for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item? Going once, going twice, sold back to Susan. Okay, are there any other questions from the council at this time? Seeing nothing going on up here, I'd accept a motion and a second. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move that the city council adopt resolution 5751, parentheses 11, which notifies interested parties of the city's intent to prepare a groundwater management plan.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. And we now come to item 11, the Renewable Energy Resource Procurement Plan and Renewable Portfolio Standard Enforcement Program. Marty, it would, it would fall to you to enforce this program. And it's good to see you with both arms swinging.
Thank you. Wow, I thought everyone was here for me, but they're all gone now. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, city administrator, city clerk, city attorney, and all citizens that are left here in the room. Okay, I have a presentation, I'll try to make it brief, I know it's been a long night. I've got some general notes here on what this is all about. Okay. Anyway, let me introduce myself first. My name's Marty Hostler, I'm the Electric Utility Division Manager for the city of Lompoc. I'm here today to discuss agenda item number 11. This is technically a public hearing for the proposed Renewable Energy Resources Procurement Plan and our Renewable Portfolio Standard Enforcement Program, which were developed pursuant to new legislation, which is Senate Bill SBX 1-2, which was signed by Governor Brown in April of 2011. Do I have a little clicker? Oh, right in front of me, okay, great. Okay, briefly go over this. This is the presentation outline. During the presentation, I'm going to highlight the following seven topics. I'm going to highlight the renewable energy legislation background, public hearing notice, the eligible renewable energy resources, 2010 retail sales and renewables, and then the procurement plan, enforcement plan, then brief summary. This all started back in 2002, when Renewable Portfolio Standard Legislation was adopted, and it's now progressed to the recent legislation, which was signed in April 2011, which is a 33% RPS legislation, which was signed by Governor Brown. And that was, that requires 33% renewables by 2020. Next slide shows that we're required for this hearing to give public notice, we're required to give 30 days' public notice. We did so, we put in a notice in the Lompoc Record on November 6, 2011. Okay, for reference, I provided this slide. This shows the technical list of what the California Energy Commission deems our renewable, or eligible renewable energy generation projects. The city of Lompoc only has three types of generation project that we, or generation that we procure. And one of them is geothermal, we have also hydro, which is less than 30 megawatts, and then we have solar. Okay, the next slide, in 2010, the city sold 133,257 megawatt-hours of electricity to customers in Lompoc. And most of that electricity that was supplied by renewables was supplied by our geothermal assets, which we have with the Northern California Power Agency, and that was, 23.4% was supplied. We, our total renewables was 24.1%, and that includes some of our small hydro that we have with NCPA, some of our Western Energy contracts that we have with the Western Area Power Administration, and then it also includes some of our solar PV projects that we have for our solar rooftop projects, and some of the projects that we have, for instance, out at our corporate yard, out at our landfill, or, excuse me, not a landfill, at the solid waste facility near Vian Central, and also at the water treatment plant. Okay, the following table shows our existing and proposed renewable resources. I'm not going to go on this table in detail, but it just shows you that what resources we have now, what our capacity is of each of the resources, and what the in-service date is projected to be for resources that we anticipate procuring in the future. Now, let's go over the procurement plan. It consists of 10 sections, I'm going to try to go through them kind of faster. First off, there are three compliance periods, followed by annual compliance periods, which commence in 2021. And so these are the three compliance periods, and then, of course, in 2021, we start having to comply annually. Okay, section number two of the procurement plan details the targets applicable to each compliance period. So item number one here shows during compliance period one, we're required to supply a minimum of 20% of the average retail sales during the compliance period with renewable energy. And if you see here, look at the highlighted section, it shows, it's highlighted 27.5%. So that means, based on our current plans, we are going to procure 27.5% of our retail sales with renewable energy. Now, on slide number two, where, shows compliance period two requirements, and we're required to supply a minimum of 25% of our annual sales by December of 2016. And we can see that we're on target to meet that based on our current plans, and that is that we're going to supply 32.2% of our retail sales with renewable generation. Okay. And in compliance period three, bless you, that shows that in 2020, we're required to supply 33% of our renewable energy with, or, excuse me, of our retail sales with renewable energy. We're projecting that we're going to be about 1.6% short in 2020 of renewable generation. However, there's provisions in the legislation that allows us to make up for that shortfall by using excess renewables that we procured in prior years. And I'll go over that in section number six. And item number four here is basically the same thing as 2020. What's happening is in 2021-plus, we're required to procure 33% of our retail sales with renewable energy. And we anticipate being short in those years also, at this time. Okay, section number three of the compliance plan, or the procurement plan, excuse me, states that we have to have reasonable progress during compliance periods two and three. That means that we have to show that we are making reasonable progress to meet the December 16, or December 2016 and December 2020 targets, which are 25% and 33% respectively. And if we look back at the tables here, if I go back to table one, we're going to, or table two, excuse me, we're going to see that we're on target to meet that 25% requirement there, because in 2014, we're going to project 29.4%, in 2015, we project 32.7%. And then for compliance period three, we're projecting in 2017, 32.8%, 2018 is 32.3%. And in 2019, we have 31.8%. So we project on meeting, meeting the intermediate targets, which are stipulated, or in the legislation and in our procurement plan, section number three. Okay, sections four and five are kind of just definition sections. They just provide the definitions of renewable generation content categories, details what makes up each content category, and how much energy we have to produce from each of the categories. And I'm not going to go into real detail on that, because the definitions are quite complex, and we're going to meet those targets, so it's not really applicable here. Procurement plan, section number six discusses excess procurement, this is what I was talking about earlier, and how we're going to meet some of our targets. First off, I'll give you a rough definition of what a renewable energy credit is. And a renewable energy credit is a credit earned for every one megawatt-hour of energy produced from a California Energy Commission-registered renewable energy generating resource. I know that's a mouthful, but that's what the definition is. The table below shows Lompoc's projected excess recs. So we show that we're going to be in good shape. If you look at the final number, which shows at the bottom right corner, shows 67,654 renewable energy credits we'll have accrued by 2021. And so that gives us plenty of credits up until 2020 and beyond for our, the future annual compliance periods that we can use to roll over to meet other requirements, or other year requirements, I should say. Okay, procurement sections number seven and eight. In summary, what they state is, in section seven, is timely compliance can be waived if there's adequate or inadequate transmission to deliver renewables to the city, or if there are projects permitting issues, or interconnection issues, or other factors that caused the delay in the procurement. Now, I've talked a lot about the procurement plan, and I don't want to alarm anyone, there is, I want to caveat it with, there is some talk and speculation in the legislature that they may relax some of the requirements in the procurement requirements, and that's in response to a lot of concerns from not only PG&E customers, but a lot of municipalities that have expressed concerns, because they can't meet these requirements. We're actually in pretty good shape, because we can actually meet these requirements to the letter, at least we project until 2019, and it's not until 2020 that we have to use, start using credits that we accumulated over the prior years. Okay, section number eight establishes the cost limitations for procurement of renewables and the maximum cost to avoid disproportionate rate impacts. The ceiling limit that we've established is $150 per megawatt-hour, and the maximum rate impact of one half, a half a cent per kilowatt-hour. Okay, section number nine is basically just a statement that's, we were required to put in, in the plan, and the statement actually benefits us, and it states that the city council retains exclusive control of the procurement of its renewable energy portfolio mix. So that means the CEC can't tell you what to do, or can't tell the city of Lompoc what to do, the Public Utilities Commission can't tell us what, how, what we're going to procure and what we're not going to procure, we decide, or actually, you decide, what we're going to procure. Okay, and section number 10 details the annual reporting requirements and the requirement to provide notice to the public. And I'm not going to go into those details, because those reporting requirements are all detailed in the, in the plan. Next section is the RPS enforcement program overview. Okay, and here, section number one, the, it's a clear statement, the RPS enforcement program is effective January 1, 2012, and that's what was required in the legislation. Sections number two and three of the enforcement program basically details the requirement for public notice, and the requirement that we have to review, we being staff, and have to procure, or, excuse me, not procure, have to review the plan annually. And so that's what we intend to do. Section number four details what staff will review annually, and it provides a summary of what's going to be reviewed annually. And we're going to review, we have to review every year annually, because we have to update our projections, and so this is what we're going to do annually. Section number five of the procurement plan, or enforcement plan, explains the process to follow in the unlikely event that targets aren't met. And so this is the process we're going to follow. Basically, the city council will direct staff to review the procurement plan and determine if there's any changes necessary for the following compliance year. It would also require staff to provide quarterly reports to the city council to ensure that we're meeting our compliance targets, and then it would also require staff to report to the city council regarding the status of meeting subsequent compliance targets, and taking steps, or making sure steps are being taken to ensure the obligations are timely In summary, based on the Electric Division's current procurement plan, all provisions of SBX 1-2 will be met through 2019. After 2019, we can utilize the banking of excess recs during prior compliance periods to meet the Renewable Portfolio Standard. The Renewable Portfolio Standard Procurement Plan will be reviewed annually to ensure compliance with the plan and the standard, and for auditing purposes... compliance with the plan and the standard, and for auditing purposes during the prior year. The renewable portfolio standard procurement plan and the renewable portfolio standard enforcement program will be effective January 1, 2012. That concludes my presentation, and I'll entertain any questions, anyone has from the council member, mayor, or the public have.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marty, thanks for your report.
Okay, you're welcome.
Correct me if I'm, and you may have covered it, and I apologize if you already covered it, but it's my understanding that some of our hydro, we are not able to use as renewable energy credits. Is that correct?
That is correct. Anything larger than 30 megawatts of the actual nameplate rating of the actual hydro unit, we're not allowed to use. And that includes primarily our Collierville assets, which we own through NCPA, and it also includes our Western assets for our large hydro that we get from the Western Area Power Administration.
And that's a large amount of power.
It is, and actually, I can tell you exactly, I have a little chart here, handy-dandy chart that I had.
It's okay. Yeah, it's, it's a lot.
It is a lot of power.
And it always upsets me. It, it's green, it's renewable, and we're not allowed to use that as credits.
Correct.
Why?
Because that's the definition that the California Energy Commission and the Public Utilities Commission decided upon, and it's most likely because they wanted to promote other renewable resources and not to grandfather in large hydro resources as renewables, probably to get better economics, or so that you could develop other businesses like solar businesses, wind energy, things, geothermal energy. It's that, there was already a large amount of hydro already in there, and I would imagine that the legislature probably didn't want to use that.
Yeah, just, to me, it seems unfair because the whole, the whole purpose is to create renewable energy, and we're doing it, we can't take credit for it. Anyway.
You're, you're correct, and actually, if we included it, our portfolio would be, right now, we'd be running about 40% renewables. But we're losing about, you know, 15%.
Yeah. Okay, then the other thing is private solar. Those of us that have solar on our roofs, how does that affect the city? Does the city get to take credit for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, what we have is each solar installation has what is called a power purchase agreement. And prior to us providing a rebate to the customer, they have to sign a power purchase agreement, and they sign over their rights for the renewable energy credits for that solar array. Now, what's interesting is some of the, we actually had, in the utility commission meeting, we actually had talked with Mr. Vanino, and we had discussed about putting, changing in and putting in production meters on some of the older installations because some of them just had net meters, they had one meter. And then with that type of facility, we can't take credit for those particular installations unless we put in a production meter, because what we have to do is we have to register each of our household facility, or household solar PV units with the California Electric Commission, and we basically can register them in groups of 25 houses, and we register it as an actual generation unit. And that's how we get credits, and we get the credits through what they call the Regis System, which is the Western Regional Generation Information System. And so we can get credit for it, we will get credit for it, but we can't get credit for it right this minute because the California Energy Commission has to develop the regulations and has to develop the policy for doing that, but they are working on that now, and it's supposed to be done sometime in April or so of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Once again, Marty, a very detailed report. Thank you. I did have a quick question. Now, I wanted to go to exhibit two, page number seven, and then what was slide number seven here with the solar panels, and this is just a question. We've listed here site two, but in this exhibit two, we've listed the drive-in. Now, I know over a year ago that we had talked about we were going to go to the airport, and now we're showing Ken Adams Park and the drive-in. I'm just kind of curious where we're going with solar panels.
Yes, okay. The site two was listed there because we think that we might be able to use the drive-in site, but we're not sure yet. We have our consultant, which is Lightbeam Energy, actually, their consultant that works through NCPA that is doing the sighting, we are not going to pay for the installation. They pay for, they would pay for their own installation. We would actually sign a power purchase agreement, so we wouldn't have any capital monies spent upfront on this. We would just buy the energy as it's produced.
Oh, so we're not going to, we're not going to convert the old drive-in movie screen to a solar panel?
No, no, that's not going to be. Won't be a big solar panel. The deal, the issue with the airport is there's FAA issues involved, and the FAA is somewhat reluctant to allow us to have a facility out there. And that's why we're not pursuing that at this time.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you for your presentation. I noticed on the summary page, one of the points was after 2019, we can utilize the banking of excess REC's during prior compliance periods to meet with the RPS. How long will the excess REC's last?
Well, based on our current projections, they would last, let's see, figure it out real quick, I think I had it right in here. Think about my excess slide. Well, based on our current projections, if we have a flat retail sales, it would last about 30 years.
That's with the assumption that annually, the rate will continue to be 33%, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Right, so you, you mentioned that there's been some discussion that they may actually relax some of the regulation, but I would argue there's actually been discussion on the other side of that coin as well, that if we continue, if municipal folks are able to follow these requirements, they may actually continue what they've done with the passage of governors and actually sign additional requirements into law that we would have to follow. So my argument would be that, I understand the idea of using excess REC's, and I know that we're doing a great job now, but I do think that we need to keep in mind we can always do better. And I'm glad that you mentioned that it is this body's decision-making power to decide where we're going with that, and I think it's something that we need to address as to where we can go in the future and, and do better. So I think that this is a great start, and I know that we're doing really well as it stands right now, and we'll see how the legislature goes with that. I would just like to state that, you know, it would be my preference that I know we'd be at 31.4%, but getting us that 33% would be ideal, and I think that we can all agree on that, or at least I would hope we would agree on that. Because I do believe that the, the purpose of the legislation wasn't to use excess REC's, but really was to meet that compliance each year through actual 33% of the sales coming from renewable energy resources.
I agree that the legislation may, in the future, we may have to provide a higher percentage, it might be 40%, we don't know. There is though, an off-ramp, and that is, it actually is in the legislation, the excess procurement, because they realize that some of us, some utilities now are actually procuring excess, and might not, it might be costly for them to get to that 33% at, by 2020, and that's why they're allowing us to use those extra credits to fit, make, in a sense, fill in for us not being able to actually generate 33% during that one year, so that we can use something that we generated prior, because you also have to account for, there's, there's going to be, at the geothermal plants, you know, there's four units there, there's going to be a shutdown of some of the turbines or generators for maintenance, and you have to account for that time, because we might end up, you know, with 5,000 megawatt hours less one year, but then the next year, we'll make, make it up, or, you know, like in 2020, we might have a planned shutdown of a unit. Of course, it's not planned on, projected on here, but in my projections that I made throughout that 10-year period, I did include the projections of having the unit shutdowns for the geothermal units and us not having all that energy. That's why there's kind of a change in some of the numbers. So that is part of the legislation, and you are correct that this is a floor level, it's not, this is the, the minimum requirement that we have to meet, and we should do better if, if that's the desire of the council.
Noted, and I appreciate your explanation. I'm definitely part of the vein that in, as far as renewable energy is concerned, we definitely don't want to limit ourselves, and I think REC's should definitely be used. I would just hate to see that be a 30-year plan. I would definitely like to see something take place to bring us up to the levels we need to be during that period of time, when the funds are there to be utilized for that reason. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment regarding a follow-up of Councilmember Lingle's question, why hydro is not considered a renewable source. And your answer that it was because maybe they wanted to develop other technologies or so forth, you know, I'm not certain that that really was the motivation. I mean, hydro, it's sort of a, it's full capacity, there isn't many more dams that you can build. So in a certain way, it is not renewable. It's, it's, it's just kind of stable, it won't be able to supply more demand. At one point in time, probably geo will become non-renewable, and perhaps even wind will become non-renewable because it would be saturated, there won't be any more places where you can put this stuff. So, so it's not just that it was for the purpose to do this, I think it's a question of, are you going to be able to supply the demand?
Yeah, that, that could be a reason. I really don't know, yeah, I really don't know what was in the legislature's mind or what they had planned. All I know is what I've heard at various meetings, and that was one of the things I've been told, and it's also because, another reason is because there was such a large amount of hydro, and people do recognize it as a renewable energy, that since there was an abundance of it, like you said, there was a saturation of it, they didn't really want to include, or they may not have really wanted to include that, at, the large hydro as being eligible, because then they, a lot of people, some big entities like PG&E that have a lot of hydro and big units, they would just say, oh, well, we already meet it, so they wouldn't do anything. And they wouldn't eliminate the greenhouse gases, they wouldn't, you know, go with greener energy, which is the purpose of the legislation.
Could you, could you mention the impact of the Housing Authorities Project and the rather large number of solar panels they put up?
Sure, the Housing Authority put up approximately about 300 kilowatts of, yeah, I think it's about 300, about 300 kilowatts of panels up, and let me look at my table here, I've got a little handy table here. So last year, we produced approximately 364 megawatt hours of solar energy with our rooftop systems, and we're projecting in 2012 to produce 692. So that's approximately 340 megawatt hours is what the impact of the Housing Authority is, 340 megawatt hours. So it's almost doubled our capacity of solar.
Okay, and this might be for Ron. What was the differential in the cost of the electricity between our forthcoming solar and our aggregate buy price? Do you remember that?
I think you know.
You got it?
I don't recall the, that conversation.
Do you recall it? I don't remember that one.
Right now, our kind of all-in melded buy price is about five and a half or six cents, and on the spot market, it actually gets down as low as two, two cents in the off-hours, and it's about three and a half cents in the peak hours. But you don't always know if it's going to be available, so you've got to kind of strike a balance in how much you contract for and how much you buy on a daily basis. And what we've tried to do here is on-peak, that when the energy could be expensive or be scarce, to have 90% under contract, and off-peak, to have about 75%, because there's a lot of entities that are almost dumping energy to keep their units online when loads are low. And so we, we found that to be the best way to move the prices, and if you compare that to the renewable market, and Marty could probably double-check with me, about 130, or 13 cents, would you say is a, probably a price?
About, about 13 cents on the, on the new solar?
130 to 140 dollars per megawatt hour, which would be 13 to 14 cents a kilowatt hour.
Yeah. Because of the decline in, in the, on the other side of the house? Because we were, it was like 11 cents, wasn't it, at one point? For day? Wasn't that where it was once upon a time?
Well, it all depends on where it was. Well, actually, right now, some of the tax incentives have gone away, so you have to, the builders, or the, they're not getting those incentives anymore. There used to be what they call a production, a production tax credit, and they're not going to be getting those starting in 2012. So that's why the pricing's going to go up for the solar, the people that didn't have those deals locked in. And there's also, you know, there's a lot of advantages with the American Re-Recovery Act of getting 33% federal tax credits, and they're not going to get, no one's going to get that anymore either. And so that's why those prices are going to go up. But what Ron's talking about is the other, on the other side of the market, now I recall what, what this conversation was, you had to jog my memory, was right now is during the evening times, there's actually some negative pricing, which means you're encouraged actually to turn some of your generating units off because there's so much renewables, primarily wind, coming in from Washington and Oregon. And so we're having some issues with some of our hydro units because the hydro, we had such a good rainfall this year, where there's negative pricing, meaning you have to pay to keep your generator online, and so you want to actually turn your unit off or get credits for what they call the, an enchilada service, where you ramp up or you ramp down and use it for frequency control on the system, so.
And last question, there was a, in one of your slides, there was municipal solid waste. Is there any approved technology yet? I mean, I saw it on the sheet, but last time I looked, a year ago, there wasn't even any, any approved technology.
Not that I know of.
Yeah. Okay, those are all, I'm sorry, Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to hydro again. Councilmember Martin, your comment about saturation, good point, and that caused me to think about something else. There's techno, or there's research going on right now, and maybe there even some production of motion waves, motion.
Yep.
Would that be considered hydro as well?
No, but it's considered a renewable, and that's a good point. You know, it's not a hydro because it's not considered, it's not a dam, it's not damming a river, controlling, controlling any river flow. That's a separate category, and so that is not, that does not have any limitations on the size or the nameplate rating of the unit. So that, you can, your free will, you can build a 100-megawatt unit and count it as renewable energy credit.
Okay, thanks.
There is a, there is a project in the very preliminary stages at Vandenberg for that. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. What is the monetary value of an REC?
Okay, very good question. This is something I'm going to bring to the council probably in a few months from now. Don't want to do it now until all the, the CEC gets all their regulations lined up until we know the dollars. Okay, there's two types of RECs. One's called a transferable rec, which doesn't come with energy. It's just a piece of paper that says, this is a renewable energy certificate, and it's also known as also known as a bucket three or category three rec, and it's worth probably about $5 to $10 for that. Now, if you buy a renewable energy credit with energy, meaning you take delivery of the, that actual energy, and you get the certificate, then that's worth between $40 to $50 per megawatt-hour. And some of the things I'll present in the future here is how we might be able to take advantage of selling some of these recs now and buying the certificates, if that's what the council wants to do, and possibly, you know, make some amount of, small amount of money, between, you know, $100, $150,000 for the city by selling some of our excess recs that we're not going to use for our procurement, because there's other things that we can use for generating recs, and that would be in our L E C unit, and using biogas, which is biomethane gas that can be burned instead of natural gas, which would eliminate the carbon, or some of the carbon footprint, and could be a good hedge force and cost-reduction measure.
So, that actually brings a good point. That's what I'm looking at right now. So, you say that in the fiscal impact, the city will earn 25,678 excess R E Cs by the end of compliance period one, period one. Steph also projects that during compliance period two, we will earn an additional 32,822 excess R E Cs in compliance three. Steph projects earning 11,312. So, I did the math, that's 69,812 excess R E Cs. Now, are these going to be with, sold, if we were to sell these, would they be sold with or without energy?
That would, that would be the decision of the council on, on how we're going to do it, and the projection, what I would recommend, and I don't have a detailed report, but I would recommend that we would wait until the end of each of these compliance periods before we make a decision on this, just in case, say, our geothermal unit had an issue with it, because we don't want to go out and sell our recs with the energy prior to the end of the, or, or farther in advance, because I think that that wouldn't be prudent, because we could have some adverse fiscal impacts, where we might have to be on the other side of the table. If our generating unit goes down, then we might have to be the ones out there on the market trying to buy market at the higher, buy recs at a higher price, because we would be short then.
Right, so although I understand we would definitely never sell all 69,812 over the compliance periods, if we were, say, for example, if we were, and we sold them with energy, that's about $3.5 million.
Yeah.
So, what I'm curious about is, at what point do you say we have so many excess R E Cs that we can actually invest, like you're saying, in a new renewable energy source that actually takes us above that 33% compliance?
Um.
And I'm sure that that depends on the resource that you're using and the cost of the facility, or whether you can buy into a facility that's already there. These are all questions that I'm bringing up, because I think it's something that should be looked at.
Yep, no, they're all good questions. The only, the drawback is, once you sell a rec, though, you can't count, you can't count it as part of your portfolio anymore. So, let's say, if I sold 10,000 recs, and that was 10% of my renewable portfolio, that's gone. Now, your portfolio is minus 10%, and so you're no longer, say, you were at 33%, now you're down to 23%. And that's what you have to report to the C E C, so although you really owned, or you generated 33%, you sold those rights off to someone else, so you can't claim those anymore as your own.
How much in excess will we be before 2019?
I can put it on here, it's about 67,000. So, you're right, though, we could actually meet the minimum levels, and we could take that other monies and maybe reinvest it in another renewable resource, and then generate more in the future after 2019. I mean, that's a possibility.
Just something to think about, right?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I mean, definitely an option that we can look into, depending on the costs associated with adding a new renewable energy source to our portfolio.
Correct.
And of course, understanding that we wouldn't sell off all, every single last R E Cs, we'd want some for some little room as well. So, please, when you come back in a few months, as you mentioned, let's discuss these things.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
And as far as selling them, though, I would, before we sell any, I wouldn't recommend it until the, the final year of each of these compliance periods, because it's, I think it's too risky to do it prior to that. But I'll come back with a package, and the point here for this presentation was, we had legislation that says we have to get this plan, and it has to be done by January 1st, 2012, and I know it's a little hokey, because it dates back to January 1st, 2011. As Joey, Joe pointed out, he says, well, why are we doing this? It goes back to January 1st, 2011, but then the effective date's not till the January 1st, 2012. But the governor didn't sign the, the legislation until April for something that was backdated, so it's, we're just doing the best we can, and the other issue is the, the regulations haven't even been written by the C E C yet, but we're required to follow the statute. So, it's kind of an arduous task for me to develop a plan to meet the stat, legislation when the regulations haven't even been written by the C E C, but they're requiring us to come up with a plan before they've even written the regulations.
Thank you. Mayor, I move to extend the meeting another hour.
And a second. I'll second it. It's been moving seconded to extend the meeting an hour. Please vote. That passes 5-0. Any other questions at this time? Nope. Can we do public comment? And now, for public comment. Anyone going once, going twice, gone, back here? Any further discussion from the council? Seeing no one, I would accept a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 5754, Prens 11, adopting a renewable energy resources procurement plan, and also approve Resolution Number 5755, Prens 11, adopting a renewable portfolio standard enforcement program.
And a second.
Second.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? Passes 5-0. Thank you, Marty. That was a very good presentation.
Thank you.
Which brings us to item 14, review of the city administrator's job description. Okay, the, this is kind of self-explanatory, there is no staff report. I would open this by seeing, and I wrote it down, so I wouldn't forget. Our focus here is, of this item is the relevancy of the city administrator's 1982 job description to today's world and this council's outlook. This current job description is very general in nature, as it was the custom in 1982. And a little quick check, I noted that four city administrators have served under this job description, and I'm anxious to hear your various thoughts on this, starting with you first.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't know.
Your question.
Okay.
Well, I, I made this request, and I have drafted a set of required duties and responsibilities that I would like to give to the council right now for review and consideration, so I'm going to pass them out. And I'm going to read them out for the public. So, these are basically required duties and responsibilities that I'm proposing to add on to the present existing job description. The first one is to enforce all laws and ordinance of the city and ensure that all contracts granted by the city are faithfully observed. Number two, plans and evaluate, evaluates management and staff performance, regularly monitors performance and provides performance improvement plans when needed, provides compensation rewards to recognize outstanding performance, takes disciplinary actions up to termination to address performance deficiencies that have not succeeded under the performance improvement plan. Number three, provides leadership to management team to implement the directions set by the city council and the laws and regulations of city government, provide leadership to ensure a high-performance, service-oriented work environment. Number four, directs and coordinates preparation of analysis and recommendations on public policy issues and on long-range plans for city services and city needs. Number five, recommends to the city council the adoption of ordinances, resolutions, and initiatives deemed necessary and appropriate for the best interest of the city. Number six, develops and recommends adoption of the biannual budget, monitors the implementation of adopted budgets, and evaluates circumstances or reasons for budget discrepancies. Number seven, establishes measurable benchmarks to assess the effectiveness of initiatives undertaken by city staff, including, but not limited to, measurable performance goals for economic development, aquatic center public use and earned revenue, code enforcement, senior community center activities and earned revenue. Number eight, develop, monitors, and evaluate effectiveness of a customer-driven program of service excellence for all employees that improves timely, accurate, and helpful communication with the public. Develop goals of customer satisfaction as a measurable objective for all city employees.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Acosta, and I guess we had similar thoughts, I'm sorry, Councilmember, I saw her light on.
I'll take credit.
Councilmember Markner, we had similar thoughts. I'd like to also pass on to the council some suggestions, and Stacy, if you wouldn't mind handing some out to the public, I made copies for the public.
You could have printed it in.
There you go. It had to get on one page. This is a lot of the same points that Councilmember Markner brought up, and I'm not going to read them all, because it is pretty similar, but I just want to highlight some of the things, the wording. It includes, shall be responsible, shall plan, direct, coordinate, and shall be responsible for the quality and performance of, and functions of the city, provides leadership, assesses community and citizens' needs, provides day-to-day leadership, evaluate, development, and implement management systems, direct and coordinates, directs and oversees, plans and evaluates, directs and monitors. Those are just some of the key words, and there's about 18 points in there. Councilmember Markner, very similar to the ones you have in there. And what I would like to recommend is that we, unless there's others, give these both to the city administrator and have her get together with our human services manager, come back with a, something that's combining these, similar to it, and possibly back with a resolution that we can adopt a new job description for the city administrator.
Counselmember Acosta.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I'm reading through both of these. All the suggestions I were going to make, I was going to make, actually look pretty well-covered, especially Councilmember Markner, number seven, establishes measurable benchmarks. Benchmarks was the key word that I wrote down, because I wanted to make sure that was added, so thank you for doing that. The question I have for both of you is, I was just curious, where did you get this information? Did you get it off a certain city or a certain source? Did you come up with it, or was it a business? Just curious.
These were combinations of several different cities' job descriptions that revealed.
In my case, I did a little bit of research with some cities' websites. I also asked members of the community, and I also looked at what I see where the deficiencies are today. So, I, in my experience here, in the three years, I have seen some deficiencies, and I have tried to add them on in here, because I think that they're needed. So, I incorporated those. What my experience has shown me on deficiencies that I have found, and I have incorporated in, in this job requirement, because I think they are required for the city administrators. Proper and excellent performance that we need to require.
Thank you, and I think, I definitely agree that having them put, asking staff to take the original, as well as these two new suggestions, and combining them into one is a great idea. There are a lot of points, however, so if they can combine a few of yours into one, or if they have a way to present it, I'm okay with doing some editing, not that I want necessarily take out a major duty, but that is pretty extensive. Not that the job description shouldn't be, but I'm okay with staff, you know, taking the authority to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that actually, I think that this is strictly a human resource kind of thing, so I would think that this really should go into the human resource department and have the human resource department come back to city with a proposal of what the new job description should be, in a fairly, you know, like, generally timeframe we're talking about, I think. And then the council can decide to adopt it, or not adopt it, or make some changes then. But it definitely needs to go into the human resources department.
Mr. Penone. Based on your experience in other cities, what path of action is generally followed in creating a new job description for a city administrator?
There isn't really any established approach. Sometimes recommendations come from the city administrator, city manager, other times it comes from the human resources department, other times it happens, it's happening here, where it goes from the council to the administrator of the human service, human resources.
So, generally, it would, if, if it were generated at the council, its next step would be to go to H R?
Whatever the next step the council wants to have it be.
Just, just trying to check and see how, how the game is played in other places. Okay, Counselmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Acosta, I appreciate your concern that these appear somewhat detailed, but I think the detail is what we've been asking for. There's concerns that the original job description that we're looking at is too general and too broad, and that's why I believe Councilmember Markner and myself tried to become, present some detailed points, and I believe that we, in the situation right now, we need to have detail in the job description. If we continue to just make it general, we'll be back in the same situation a year from now, two years from now. So, I'd like to, I agree, give it to the human resource department, have them come back to us, but I would hate to have them take the points that Councilmember Markner and I presented and put them into a general format. I believe there has to be detail, we have to have very precise, concise verbiage in it that makes it easier for us to do an evaluation, and also makes it easier for the city administrator to evaluate her staff. So, again, not general terms, but I think there has to be specific verbiage in there.
Counselmember Starbuck. I'm going to concur with Councilmember Lingle. I mean, I, it's kind of overwhelming, but I'm going through these, and you've hit every point that I was going to do, and I actually had plagiarized one myself, but I did it in print. No, I think that I, we're proceeding down the right path here, and I, I think that H R should, should receive this package and, and go ahead and do it.
Who did you plagiarize from? Who?
I like the issue. And I like it.
Who?
I like the issue.
No, you answered the question. I'm Mike.
No, I looked at Del Mar, Roseville, and then a book called The Armed Forces Officer, so.
Councilmember Acosta.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I must have stated it the wrong way. I didn't want it to be bare bones. That wasn't my intention. I just wanted to give the authority to the human resources department to provide us with the best example of what they feel the job description should be. I'm okay with including it all, just as long as the three are combined into one and there's not repeats of more than, there's not repeats. Thank you.
I'm interested to hear about Roseville. Oh, well, I read it too, and I thought it was very good. Okay. So it seems what everybody is saying is to pass this on to HR and let them craft something using this information, and my assumption is that we would be happy if they found other information to use and include that made a better document out of it, that we're not limiting them to just what we put in front of them. They can, they can go look at Roseville or wherever else, and I looked at Roseville. Is that okay with everybody?
Mr. Mayor, I think HR has to look at the council direction, and these documents that are provided here, they don't need to go and do further research and do comparisons with other cities. I mean, at this point in time, the path that we have gone is we are making a recommendation to HR, and I think what HR needs to do is to put it all in one, in one place to make sure that there is no redundancies between Councilmember Lingle's and mine, and, you know, and that's it. And then just come back to the council with, this is what the job description is, and then we discuss it, approve it, or make changes to it. But there is really, I don't see that HR really needs to go and do additional research at this time.
Just a question now. Can this be sent out as a draft to us individually and so we could look at it prior to a councilor? Is this something where we all have to be together to receive it and discuss it?
You can look at it outside of a public meeting, but to make comments on it, you'll have to do that in a public meeting? No.
Okay, from my standpoint, number one, I haven't read this rather involved document. Number two, I don't really want to limit what HR has an opportunity to look at, so I frankly couldn't support that. It's that simple.
Mary Lynn, I'm going to agree with you. I want to give the HR department the opportunity to make any suggestions that they feel would be a good addition or likewise make any suggestion and reasoning why they feel one of the points given should not be included.
Okay, so what do we want to do here, guys? Councilmember Lingle.
I move that we direct the city administrator to have human resources take a look at the material that was provided to staff tonight. If they feel it is lacking in any way, they can contribute to it, but I don't think they really need to waste a lot of time. I believe that Councilmember Martin invested quite a bit of time. There's a lot of time invested in mine, but if they feel that they can add to it, let them add to it. I mean, you know, and then come back to us with a suggestion.
I second that motion.
Okay, I think we missed public comment. So anybody out there want to weigh in on this one? Seeing nobody rush down, we'll close that. I apologize, but I'm going to think a minute.
Mr. Mayor, if you have a concern that you haven't read this, you will have the opportunity to read this when it comes back on the agenda and take out or add anything that you may feel. It will be coming back as an agenda item, and at that time, you'll be able to add or subtract anything you wish. This is only the starting point.
Councilmember Lingle, in your motion, were you giving some of that authority to the HR department, or is it only to add and that's it? Or can they sort of form it and shape it and add and subtract as they see fit?
To add and combine, but I would not want to see anything subtracted.
Being that I, although I understand that we are the body that oversees this position, I'm not a human resources professional, so it's very difficult for me to say, to support that motion the way it sits. I trust in our HR department that they have the expertise to do that.
Realize that these points, Councilmember Martin went to other city sites, I went to other city sites, these have been prepared by human resources professionals. These were not, these points we presented were not put together by a city council in Roseville or Delaney.
Although I understand that Councilmember Lingle, copying and pasting them onto an extensive list doesn't necessarily mean it was formulated in the best possible manner. So that was my concern is, I just, you know, I think that we're on the right track, just give them the authority to look at it. We'll all be able to have these documents when it comes back to us. If we feel like they edit it too much, we'll state it at that time.
But two versions. No, I mean, I'm serious, two versions. One, put together by the human resources department, and one, combining the recommendations of Councilmember Martin and myself. And then this body right here can decide. It's not going to, I don't see where that is going to be anything, any difficult, very difficult. I think they'd be able to do that. That way, we keep five people happy, and we come up with the best possible job description.
Councilmember Starbuck, I'm curious to see how you feel on this issue.
I truthfully, after watching HR go through some of the hiring processes and all, have got faith that they will do a good job on it. I think that a good compromise in this case would be if they were going to delete anything, that they should leave it in there as an italicized way to know what was taken out of these two
I'm comfortable with that.
Well, we have a motion in a second, so we either have to vote on that and vote it down if you want to go with something else, or vote for it.
amended.
No, I'm not going to amend it.
Do you wish to amend it or not?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I'm a little puzzled was the problem here. The reason why I make this request is because I had much opinion, much feedback, and also my own personal experience, that we have been unable to give performance reviews in a very specific way because they were not very specific. And we have gone down the path with contracts to really make very, very specific benchmarks. These are our direct reports. If we don't agreed on what they should have and we just want to leave it, leave it to the government system, we might be following the same path that we have been following for the last 15 years, which is leave it to HR and they'll write a very generic job description. Here we have two council members that have asked for very specific things. I think maybe the other three council members might want to add some things, and I don't see what is wrong with that. Take this back to HR, they can make a document, it will come back to us, council members could take things out, could add things in, and vote on it. I really don't see what's the problem.
And I agree with you completely, but we're not giving them the opportunity to do that.
We're giving them the opportunity to add.
Right, you use the words "to make a document," but the discrepancy is how that document would be formulated.
And my motion is not, they don't have to take this verbatim. They can massage it, they can make it look more like a professional document, but I think the points in the proposals that Councilmember Martin and I have made, I believe that the essence of that needs to remain, and the very specific, some of the very specific verbiage. We've complained in the past about having things too general, and I believe that unless we make it specific and some key words, that they will come back more general, and that's exactly what we don't want.
So for example, your document actually suggests some pretty interesting things. For example, develops council meeting agenda with mayor, attends and participates in all city council meetings. So that's sort of a very new...
No, that happens right now. Yeah.
So it happens all the...
Not so much.
Yeah, as far as I know, that actually doesn't happen as much, that she has ultimate authority over the way things are put on the agenda. So just pointing out there that...
That's not my understanding. I mean, the city administrator has told me many times that she will discuss it with the mayor and the legal council. But the point is, if you don't like it, you can talk about it when it comes back as an agenda item. I mean, why are you, why do you want to exclude it right now?
Because this is an agenda item, and we're talking about it right now.
Well, but no, but we're asking, the agenda item is to modify the description, the job description, and what the motion is, is to send this information back to HR, so HR comes back with a job description that has not, you know, taken anything out of here and may have add other things, and then the council will decide once it comes back.
Okay, so for instance, yeah, I don't want to know what the motion is. So for instance, for instance, enforces all laws and ordinances of the city, ensures that all contracts granted by the city are faithfully observed. We have a policy in the city where certain portions of our laws and ordinances are complaint-based, but that's not what this says. This says that you have to enforce every law and every ordinance all of the time. So that, and I'm not picking on one thing, I just picked the first one on the page. So my concern is that if we make it too narrow for HR and the city attorney who needs to review it, that we're going to get back a document that's going to be, it's late, I'm tired, less good. And I just would like to give them the opportunity to deliver to us the very best document the first time by not tying their hands. Councilmember Lingle.
Actually, I agree with you that it will come back to us with some things that we may or may not like, and that's okay. I mean, this, the job description we're working on right now was written in, what, 1982?
Correct.
Eighty-two. So if it takes us two council meetings, three council meetings, to come up with one that we're all happy with, so what?
So why don't you want them to be able to provide the input that they choose to provide? I'm very confused.
Because I want them to include the information that we choose that they provide, that they put in.
And the motion does not exclude that they will provide. The motion says they can add. I mean, I mean, have we, we're saying that they can add to this job description, what we're saying, and perhaps maybe the amendment that if they want to say, take something out, put it in italics, so we are aware that they want to take something out because they're going to give us some reason why they have to take it out, and that is fine as well.
Perfect, that's all I want in life.
Perfect, I'm fine with that, too.
No problem with that.
That's what I've been telling you the whole time. Would you amend your motion, please?
I don't know what I'm amending it to. I, I'm still with the original one, that I want them to take the information that was provided with them and come back with a job description. Now, Councilmember Martin, what were you just saying?
Okay, I am going to make the motion that HR takes on this information...
Let me withdraw my motion.
Okay. The motion...
Second, and the second is to withdraw the motion, too?
Yes.
I withdraw my second. I am going to make a motion that HR takes the job descriptions, these two pieces of paper that council has supplied, and works on drafting a new job description that may include new information, that may have information here that they may think that is not suitable, but they will keep it in and they will mark it as is not suitable because whatever reasons. So they have the liberty to make us aware that maybe one or many of these are not suitable. They can point that out to us, but they cannot take it out. We decided we take it out. They put it in italics. They may add other things to the job description that they may feel that is needed, required by law, given other input that HR may have, historical data, whatever. That's my motion. And I would like that to come back as an agenda item, so the council can review this new job description and make changes as it needs, as it wants to.
Do you want any special text designation for anything that they add? So if they're going to italicize...
Second. Somebody?
Well, I wanted to possibly add something to that motion before somebody seconded it.
Okay.
Because you're going to italicize what they take out, should we bold what they add, just so we have an idea of what we started with and how they changed it?
Yes, very good idea. They can italicize, you know, things that they want to take out, leave them there, and they can use another font to add material to it.
I will second that motion.
I like it. Okay, any further discussion on this motion? And that was a bit long and winding. Stacy, are you comfortable that you have the gist of it? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please?
Now, Mr. Mayor, now, Mr. Mayor, I have a question regarding a comment that you made earlier regarding these two agenda items, and I guess I've been misinformed. My understanding was that the council decided that council and redevelopment agency requests and announcements would be at the end of the meeting, but those were the request and announcements. I am not aware that that decision carried to actually when those requests became agenda items and that they have to be at the end of the agenda.
That was my understanding of more prior decisions.
But that's not my understanding, and perhaps we need to clarify that, because my understanding was that we would like to make the request and announcements at the end of the meeting because members of the public may not be too aware, but once it becomes an agenda item, who says that they have to go at the end of the meeting? And maybe we need to review that in the policy if that's the case, and I want to know whether there is a policy for that. Can somebody clarify that right now?
City administrator.
Mayor and council member, I believe that the policy, the council, city council handbook was revised to include that policy, so it should be in your handbook.
Right, but what does the policy say? That the agenda items go at the end of the agenda?
That it would follow, all those items that were requested by council would follow public hearing items on the agenda. So the agenda was revised and reformatted at that time.
I'm not aware of it, I guess, but...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Martin, it was my understanding, the way we're doing it right now, that was my understanding as well.
Okay, so let's get down to it. Are there any written communications? Well, yeah, I'll have it in my section. And two minutes for anybody that's left alive out there. And two minutes for anybody that's left alive out there. Come on down.
Carol Benham, Lumpok resident. Good evening. I may have digressed a little bit and talked about Goldman Sachs and Jon Stewart and Martha Stewart. I just wanted to be very clear that you all knew what my request was to you. And my request to you all was that you take an action. You put yourself on record that this Lumpok City Council will pursue getting an independent financial audit for LHCDC's missing five years. I know, I have no idea what you guys do in closed session, but based upon my understanding, if you were to take an action in closed session to initiate an audit, that would be an action you would have to announce. So I have that assumption in mind that you haven't yet done that, to take an action, to pursue an audit. And I repeat that I really hope that you do, and that it takes three of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll come back to council agency comments, meeting reports, agenda requests, et cetera. Councilmember Starbuck, you're first for a change.
I was right on it tonight. I've got two council requests, and one of them is I'd like to go ahead and have council re-prioritaries, reprioritize the same purpose committee for the old pool. We've got a draft agenda item already done. I think most all of us have already talked to somebody to put them on the committee. I would love to appoint this committee at the 20th December meeting so they could start the first of the year and we could move on with this. Otherwise, I just feel it's going to get lost. The other request that I have...
One at a time.
One at a time?
One at a time.
Okay.
And I agree, I think that the amount of work that needs to be done to get on the agenda is pretty well done. And I'd like to see us get started on it, too. So I'm a second, and now it looks for a third.
A third?
I'm sorry?
Third.
A third, okay.
So we can appoint our committee on the 20th?
Yes, that will be our objective.
The other council request that I had was, you know, I attend a lot of commission meetings, and there are commissions that wish to speak with council. And our current policy, I don't think, is adequate enough for us to deal with our commissions. We're using them and we're doing it extensively. So I've pulled two pieces of, I've taken the council handbook and I read, "When a council advisory body provides recommendations to the council, its chair or other members selected by the applicable council advisory body shall be given an opportunity to make an oral report jointly with staff about the recommendation at a meeting where the council considers that recommendation." This is out of our handbook.
Let me put it in.
Now, when you go to the commission handbook, this is where it gets bad. Relations with city council, I'm just not going to read the whole thing, but I'm going to highlight it. It says, "Each council member will select two or three committees on which to serve as a liaison to the council. Council members will attend meetings of the selected committees as time permits, once or twice a year. The staff or committee will remind the council member of the next meeting or the follow-up regarding significant issues. And then the council member liaison will then report to council concerning the committee meetings." Now, that's out of our commission handbook. So we're talking about several different things here. I know that Public Safety would like to talk to us. I knew that the Human Services Commission wanted to talk to us. I just, I think that we're shutting off our commissions up here.
Okay, so what you identified is inconsistency between the council handbook and the committee and commission handbook.
Well, that and an inability to communicate with our appointed commissioners.
Well, probably they're looking at one handbook and we're looking at the other.
Well, they're looking at, they want to talk to us.
That's a good thing. Okay, so what I think I'm hearing you say is that we need to have an amendment to the commission and committee handbook to make it consistent with the council handbook.
Mr. Mayor, the way I heard them, I don't think they're inconsistent. What they're saying is when the commission makes a recommendation, the chair or someone else in the commission comes and makes an appointment, I mean, makes some comment. In addition, the council appoints people to go to the commission meetings, and at those commission meetings can sit and listen, and then comes back to the council and just tells the council what happened at the recent commission meeting. Not only when the council commission makes a recommendation on an item, but, I mean, and other cities do that similar. So I just didn't hear them as inconsistent. I heard them as two different things accomplishing, attempting to accomplish two different things.
Okay, Councilmember Lingle?
I'm not going to be commenting on that. I'll be doing my own report, so if there's other comments on Mr. Starbuck's, I'll let them continue.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I've stated in the past that I think that our commissions are definitely underused, and I would like to see more use between the commissions and the councils. However, I do know that in 2012, we will be having our council and commission meetings. And I think that would be a great time to discuss this with each individual commission as to the issues that they're confronting with communication and how we can better that relationship. Are you satisfied, does that satisfy you, Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, I guess the whole point is, is I know the Public Safety Commission wants to address council about some issues. They are looking for guidance on which way to go with things. I think that the Human Services Commission had had some issues that they wanted to address council on. The way that these two are written, when you read the commission handbook, it gives you no guidance on how to report to council. And so I think that this should be clarified. I think it should align with the new council handbook, is what I'm thinking. If you would like a copy, you can have this.
I agree with you completely. And, you know, regardless of the fact that we're all assigned to various committees as a liaison, I don't know how many you get to, but it's not...
We rotate.
Yeah. You know, they end up in my daybook, but something more pressing comes along and they get kicked off and I end up at the more pressing activity.
We do not have an appointed liaison to the commissions. We rotate three months and then we go to a different commission, and, you know, it's...
Right, Councilmember Starbuck, but as you, as the copy states, it's as time permits, once or twice a year. So that suggested attendance, and I do try to attend as much as possible, as you saw me at the Human Services Commission meeting. But by no means do I make it to every commission meeting that I'm supposed to attend during those three-month periods.
I guess the question here is, is when are we going to determine the guidance for the Public Safety Commission? We don't know what guidance they're looking for. They want to meet with the council. This is just one example. I'm finding this at commission meetings that I go to. Some commissions are invisible, others are very much out there. There's a problem in our communication with our commissions. I think that it's been a long, slow way of separation. But I think it's, we need to bring it back in. We need to get our citizen government back in line with the council.
And although I completely agree 100%, my suggestion is that we take that up individually with each commission as we meet with them, starting next month. I mean, January 2012, we should be meeting with Public Safety Commission. At least, that's my impression.
Councilmember Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the public comment that Ms. Benham gave us twice tonight, asking the council to take action on pursuing independent financial audit, I would like to ask this council the permission to communicate to the public what happened in the closed session, in a closed session regarding this subject. And I'm asking the council for permission right now to do so.
Mary Lynn, if I could ask the city attorney to address this before I gave my decision? The concern you'd have as a city attorney, that's the question that I asked you earlier.
If the council says, if the council as a body agrees to allow something in the closed session to be reported out that wouldn't necessarily be reported out, it can be reported out.
You don't feel that the information that's being discussed could have a negative impact on our ultimate goal?
Now you're asking me for my opinion, you're not asking me what...
I am, I mean, when we're talking about anticipated litigation here, I have no problem with the information. I was one of the folks in closed session that suggested we do a certain action. But at the same time, I don't want to put us in a bad position if we are anticipating litigation.
My opinion is that that subject matter is something that the council should discuss in closed session on whether or not you want to have it released and open. Because there's no way for the council to discuss whether they have a concern about it or not without disclosing what is being discussed. That's my opinion. That's not legally required, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Come on up here, one. Are you satisfied? No, are you satisfied that, are you satisfied based on this discussion that we are not ignoring this, that we are, that we are, we're addressing it? Are you satisfied? You see the dilemma we're in? I mean, I agree with Councilmember Costa. I want to make sure, I'd love to have us broadcast the... But if we jeopardize what we're doing, that is a concern of mine. It should be obvious to you right now that we are not, we are not ignoring it. We fully intend on doing something. You see this predicament we're in?
If you're asking me if I believe the council is ignoring LHCDC, I would say no. As you well know, I've leveled some criticism at the council for doing a lot behind closed doors and very little publicly. I have, so tonight was a good step, just as the previous step with College Park Housing and people's self-help housing was a good thing. More information was released publicly. I have a concern that this organization that has received millions of dollars of public funds has refinanced many properties, pulling out cash equity, and yet still owes millions of dollars to private individuals, banks, and city and county government. I have a concern that they can end up dissolving whatever occurs and there will never be a financial accounting to answer the questions that many people in this community have. I don't know everything you know. I don't know where the records are. I don't know if anybody's made an attempt to retrieve the records. I know that nobody's been able to see the records for five years, and thus I have a concern.
And I'll ask our city attorney to tune in or voice his opinion on this if I'm making a mistake. Just because they dissolve, if they dissolve at the end of the year, that will not make them not responsible for their actions, if there are criminal actions, just because they're dissolved. The statute of limitations allows prosecution beyond the dissolution of their organization. Is that correct? So...
If, you're saying if there was some kind of criminal activity?
Yes.
Is that what you prefaced that with?
Yes, well, there wouldn't be no prosecution even if there was no criminal activity, there would be no prosecution.
Certainly, absolutely.
Yeah, so they are not absolved of their criminal activity, even if the organization has been dissolved? Alleged, yes.
Right, and I've never alleged that. I've simply stated an audit, and audit, and audit because without it, no one will ever know. And I do know that HUD regulations limit the timeframe that their records have to be kept. And they're already out of it.
Yeah, just realize that their records are not the only records available.
I'm really uncomfortable talking about this any further. I just...
Don't you think the public deserves to know?
I think the public deserves to know every last single bit at the moment when no more, when no damage can be done with it. If, next council meeting, everyone seated up here agrees to tell everyone everything, then I'm all good with it. As long as the city attorney looks right at us and says, okay, here's your risk by doing this, and we choose to accept that risk. That's the decision that we have to make to be a good steward of the public funds. What I believe Mr. Lingle was saying is there is no statute of limitation on the theft of public funds.
Embarrassment of public funds. I, since I legally can make the request and ask the permission to the council, that's all I've done. And I asked the permission, and I would like a response from the council on the permission that I asked to disclose what was discussed regarding the public comment. That's all. You can turn it down if you wish, I'm just asking for permission.
I am not prepared to discuss here an item that we did in closed session. At our next closed session, I will be happy to discuss whether we should let that out. I have no idea of all of the impacts that are, that could possibly occur. And anyone else, because welcome to chime in. Excuse me.
Councilmember Lingle?
On another note, Mr. Mayor, on Thursday, December 1st, I attended an NCPA meeting in Roseville. I drove up there, the city paid for my mileage, and they paid for a motel room for me. Also, I'd like to ask the city administrator to compliment the electric utility staff today. I was given a notice yesterday on my doorstep that they would be turning off the power to my home and my neighbor's home at 8:00 AM, be down for eight hours, replacing a pole. They were very efficient, they had it done in less than eight hours, and I was very happy with the job they did, so please compliment them. I wish I had their names, I met them out there. But it's a staff that replaced a pole between Sixth and Seventh Street. Very good job, very professional, nice people, considerate of the neighbors and all of us, so, and done ahead of time. So thank you.
Councilmember Lingle, I will pass that on to the staff, thank you.
Next, Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. It's been a while since our last council meeting, so on November 16th, Mary Lynn was briefly there, Councilmember Starbuck and I were both in attendance at the event to raise funds for the Muscifer Dystrophy Association at the Red Zone Restaurant. And it was a great time, and I was able to raise my bail, which was exciting, it was $800, and I exceeded that, and actually still had some donations after the event. So thank you for all of those who donated, it's greatly appreciated. In addition, one last thing, was I was recently a guest speaker at Ragetti High School. I spoke to two ROP communications classes about the importance of networking, and that was very exciting for all of the young folks who were very excited that I was a council member, and they were very receptive. And so I hope to be doing that in, not just in Santa Maria and Orchid, but hopefully Lumpok invites me over as well. So I just wanted to announce to council that that was a great opportunity. And that was done through the Boys and Girls Club volunteer coordinator as well, so keep a lookout for those emails. One last thing, there is an event I was told to announce. This, it's a performance of Handel's Messiah, presented by the Lumpok Valley Master Corral, celebrating 20 years. It's the 16th and 17th of December, which is a Friday and Saturday, at 7:30 PM at the First United Methodist Church on F Street here in town. The tickets are $15 or $10 if you're a student, and you can pick those up at the Avenue Flower Shop.
Councilmember Martner?
I was going to make that announcement, but I'm glad that it happened. The other announcement is Good Samaritan is... The other announcement is Good Samaritan is having a Face of Homeless event that the public is invited to attend Divine Bar toma, I'm sorry, Thursday at 4:30 PM. Oh, I'm sorry, 5:00 PM. I don't have it in front of me. And if you wish to attend this event, please contact Pat Brady at Good Samaritan Shelter.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Feel it very important that we tip our hats to Parks and Recreation for a really great Christmas parade that they put on. Other than the annoying elf, it was really a great time for me. I'd like to say, you know, that the rotary clock and the electrical division and streets and everybody that worked on that, I think it's a really great addition to downtown, and I'm glad it was done on time, on budget, so thanks to everybody involved in that.
Okay, to open up a couple, three things. I attended 32 meetings and events over the last three weeks, and I would like to say that the elf and the Christmas parade were great fun, but opening the youth basketball season was probably the most fun, seeing all those kids fired up to play basketball. That was a great thing. And I paid for the expenses out of my council salary. The street department ended up with some extra tons. And so last, I think it was Friday, they got to talking about Hawthorne, which we've all discussed, how horrible it was. And they were able to change the formula of what went down so that it dried faster. And so thanks to Larry and the guys for coming up with the idea. And thanks to Smitty's Towing for racing over there and moving one car for us. And the stuff went down, and the street looks way better, and life is good. On my council requests, I think you've all received a copy of a letter from the Chumash tribe. They own and operate their transit center here in Lompoc, and they employ approximately 700 Lompoc residents as their workers. That makes them the largest private employer in the valley. And for those of you that have toured their reservation, their residential area is extremely cramped, and there is simply nowhere to expand. And they recently purchased a very large tract of land with the idea of expanding their reservation to that area for their housing. There has been a great deal of discussion that they did this to build some new super casino. And they have repeatedly said, no, we didn't. So in the letters that they sent us, I asked them to describe under what circumstances they could possibly build a casino there. And if you've had an opportunity to read the letters, you'll find that it's a very intricate approval process. Only four tribes in the country have ever survived it, and they didn't have a casino to start with. And the governor of the state of California has to sign over. And I bring this up because they've asked for our support in their Feed Trust pursuit of this new parcel of land for housing for their families. And I think it's interesting that this land that they have just purchased back was taken from them by the Spanish in days long ago. And now they have an opportunity to provide new and improved housing for their tribe. I think we should consider this and accept public comment on it and make a decision on whether or not we can provide a resolution of support for them. And I would ask for a second and a third to agendize this at next, at our next council meeting. Anybody out there want to come in on this?
Mr. Mayor, I have to admit that I have not read the letter. But it sounds interesting, and I will second it just to get more information.
Okay, and this is just to get it on the agenda so that we can discuss it, and a third?
Mary Lynn, it's difficult because as a public institution to be supporting, although they're not necessarily private, they're sort of that like third category, right? There's a lot of controversy involved in that purchase. I am interested in hearing more about it, but I would like the public input definitely before we made that decision. So all third.
The goal here is to get it before us. May I, did I talk about agendizing and breaking up the, I'm really tired. The general plan into multiple meetings, did we already do that? Okay, good. Sorry, I don't remember. To have a discussion of it.
You know, I thought that when we review the city council handbook, Councilmember Starbuck. Yes, Councilmember Starbuck mentioned that we should really restrict our businesses to what directly affects us, and we shouldn't be. Okay, can you read it, please, because I don't know if this falls in there?
It says, "City staff will review various bills pending before the state and federal legislatures that may affect city finances, programs, revenues, home rule, municipal affairs, or other local concerns. These will, these bills will be agendicized and presented to council for its consideration of formal support or opposition. If time constraints prevent discussion at a regular meeting, staff will prepare a letter on the issue for the mayor's signature, consistent with council policy. If no policy exists, then no letter shall be sent. Legislation at another government level generally will be formally supported or opposed only if the issue directly affects the city of Lompoc, is within council's jurisdiction, and is consistent with council policies. Formal support or opposition may be expressed on legislation that may affect city finances, enhance public revenue sources, help regain revenues retained by the state of California, and preserve and enhance local control of municipal affairs. The council will not take any action to provide advice regarding how an electoral, how an elector should vote on any state or local ballot measure unless the League of California Cities has encouraged cities to take such action or the matter directly affects the city's funding or operations."
I mean, that pretty much ties our hands, right?
Right. I don't agree. You know, the Chumash are a large local employer, and it impacts them. And we wouldn't have had a fireworks show if they hadn't cut a check, and so many other things. So we are surely tied to them as to anything else. I believe they deserve a fair hearing. At the end of the fair hearing, if we don't believe that to be the case, then we should vote no. That is all they have asked for. And considering all they have done for us and all the people that work for them that live in Lompoc, I'm not going to change how I think.
Right, the difficulty that I'm having, I think, as well is that, you know, when you talk about future relations with a possible organization that helps our community, that can have an impact, right?
Don't know till we get there and discuss this.
Councilmember Lingle, what do you think?
You know, I still want to hear more information, and we have the opportunity at that time to reject it. And I, I'm sort of at a disadvantage because I have not read that letter, but I'd just like to hear more information. If you, if you want to withdraw your third, you know, that'd be fine.
Yeah, just because we agree to hear it doesn't mean we have to vote for it.
Move to extend. I'll hear it.
Okay. I have nothing else left except to say that the Customer Service Charter of Excellence booklet is now available, and each council member should pick up some to spread around. And, 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 I gotta have the date. God, a thing I have to announce at the end, or you smack me. December 20th, and we are adjourned to the next regular meeting of December 20th. We made it.